Okay, I'm going to call the Harbor Commission's special meeting, March 3rd, 1:00 P.M. To order. Do you want to do a roll call? Randy?
Jake Betts.
Here.
Andy Craig.
Here.
Max Wees.
Here.
Ken Jones.
Here.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and so this is a special meeting. We don't have... Oh, we do. Okay, so we need to approve the special agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any opposed? Okay, number two is approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's done there. Any opposed? Should we review the meeting, the minutes at the next?
That's why, yeah, I just put on the next regular, we'll just get them in there.
Well, yeah, that's... Okay, communications by visitors. Anybody want to speak?
I got you.
Speaker.
Oh, okay.
Then we go to Helen.
I was waiting for the audience.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You're...
No.
There's no one on, yeah, there's no one on.
Okay, great. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you all for your services, members of the Harbor Commission. It's such a vital role because the harbor, as you all know, is really critical infrastructure for our town, and it's so important that it provide for the users at every level. And we all know it's lacking right now. And I just want to reiterate city's commitment to making sure that those harbor projects that you guys have been discussing for some time get... happen. And I want to let you know some successes. We've been pursuing funding really aggressively, and we've had some indications of success from both EDA, the Economic Development Administration, as well as some conversations we've had around the Bill Grant that we've been submitting for the last couple of years. We've had sit downs with staff with the Build program, and they've identified weaknesses in our proposal, ways that we can improve it. And we've taken all those necessary steps to make sure that the application that goes in this time hopefully checks off all the boxes and will be a success. On that note as well is that the feds are putting a lot of money into infrastructure to help with the COVID economic crisis, basically. I suspect that there might be more funds that are going to be available. And this is where I would really like to have a conversation with all of you and really help you help us as city government focusing on what other projects might there be out there that we can start looking at that would benefit the harbor and the harbor users. So as it stands right now, you guys have done an enormous amount of work on the South Harbor. We know what the issues are. We've identified how to fix them. Tony is actively working with plans, and we are actively seeking funding. So I think at this moment in time, until those funds become available and we can really focus in on exactly what we're going to do with them, I'd like for you as the commission, in its role, and a way to be most helpful to city government, city council, and the planning department, is to really focus in on the North Harbor and the potentials that exist because the Science Center is going to be moving with their new building. There's some opportunities there to think really expansively around this whole chunk of land and how could we best use it for the benefit of the users of the harbor. So I'm hopeful that that would be a direction to go. Right now, I know you guys are looking at the Forest Service and possible interests from other parties like Shoreside Petroleum. And I think, as I'm hearing things, and I'd love some feedback if you feel otherwise, is that what ultimately is needed is some flexibility. Whatever we do in the North Harbor, we need to have flexibility so that any planning that you guys have not yet done, we don't step on our own toes and make it impossible for certain things to happen. So I think that any agreements that we negotiate at this moment in time, until such a plan is in place for the North Harbor, needs to be negotiated and designed with the greatest amount of flexibility in mind, so that potential projects that might come up as a result of your thinking and your planning and as user interest comes forward, that we can have that opportunity. And I want to let you know that I've had some conversations with the Forest Service around that, because right now they're operating, or have been operating, on a 50-year lease that is not short-term. And made it pretty clear that, from what I'd read from your commission meetings, is that the ultimate need right now is buying time so that the right solutions in the right places in the harbor can be determined and evaluated and decided. So the Forest Service is very willing to sit down and do a different type of lease that would allow outs either to... for us to undertake projects that are coming forward, whether it's short-term or under these circumstances, we would negate the lease and pursue other options. And they're very amenable to that. Again, we're dealing with the federal government, but I've just discussed this with our attorneys, and I just want you to know that we have opportunities there to provide that wiggle room and breathing room that you guys probably are looking for as you decide how do we lock in longer-term commitments that would make it impossible for us to maneuver maybe very well as we think about our long-term plans for the harbor. So I just wanted to be really clear about that, is your guidance is really critical. The Planning Commission will make its recommendations, but ultimately council will have to drive an agenda. And I think what would be really useful and helpful, not only to me as a manager, but to council, is to understand that we're not looking to find immediate solutions, but we're looking for strategies that will allow us to develop the right solutions. So I share that with you with open arms to understand what Harbor Commission feels is needed. The other thing, and Tony and I have been talking a little bit about this, is when was the last time there was a needs assessment done for users? You know, as we look at opportunities, especially with funding, oftentimes the funders are going to say, "How do you know that's what's needed?" And so sometimes those kinds of assessments are really helpful when we seek funding. So we may want to put some resources into a needs assessment to identify what not only the fishing fleets' needs are, but other uses like Forest Service or other potential amenities in the harbor that we might want to be considering. So those are things that are really useful to staff as we pursue funding. And it's something I would certainly encourage if you all felt that was something you want to use harbor resources for, but a modest needs assessment would be really useful tool for us as we apply for funding. So that's my spiel at the moment.
Okay, well, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions for Helen. I guess I'll start off with the idea of a needs assessment. It sounds like a great idea, but how would you ensure that it would be harbor users that were filling that out and not just people in the community who want to impose agendas on the harbor that doesn't necessarily benefit actual harbor stall pay, you know?
Right. I think that's pretty easily accomplished if we hire someone, like say for instance Agnew Beck. They can really specifically target users. We've got mailing lists of fishing permit holders. Certainly, the harbor has access to all the leaseholders or renters or users of the harbor. We could easily identify that. And that would be the goal, and goal would be to make sure that we identify those users. But in addition to that, are there users that maybe don't pay slip fees but use the harbor? And I don't know. You know, we would really want to identify that. The other thing is, is maybe you guys have identified services that are needed in the harbor, and we could work with... we could survey the people who potentially could provide those services in the harbor to find out what they need and get that information back to you. So I would say this is that harbor, you all, staff, and Harbor Commission would drive the... would drive the kind of framework for that survey.
Okay. And then a follow-up question. Have you had a chance to look at the 2013 Harbor Development Plan that was produced?
Yeah. And the question is, and this is what we've been told, is that's an old document. So when our funders are looking at that, he said, "Okay, have you updated that plan?" You know, and, you know, because that's now seven years old. And to a lot of funders, seven-year-old work is maybe a good framework and a good foundation, but what have we done to update that? So that becomes the question, and it drives back to you all and the work you do. I mean, it may be totally relevant, and maybe you just need to adopt it again with a current date on it. But it might be that you look at and say, "No, we're really not focused that way anymore," or "We want to do this," or "We want to do that," or maybe "We want to take some time and have another conversation," which is certainly up to you all. But that document is not considered contemporary until you all look at it and ratify it and say it's now our document.
Okay. That was drafted after multiple public workshops and meetings.
Right.
So that wasn't just Harbor Commission, that was community and whole that wanted to see.
Right. And again, it may be that it is still relevant, but the funding agencies that we're looking at view anything older than five years as being non-responsive, not relevant to the conversation.
Interesting historical overview.
I just wanted to ask, can I... Are you talking to South Phil development stuff? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. But it included more than just South Phil. It was called the 2013 South Phil Development or South Harbor Development.
Right. I just want to make sure we were talking the same thing.
Yeah. I mean, it had stuff in there for North Phil. It had stuff in there for the North Harbor and the South Harbor, and extension of the South Phil.
Right. And, you know, it probably feels very fresh in all of your minds, like we just did this. But considering it's 2021 already, again, the folks that are going to be providing the resources want to make sure that everything we're suggesting is what we want right now. And again, it could be, but you would just have to make sure that you've gone through a process to ratify it again.
Would we have to go through all those public workshops again? Because I hate to see us waste more time and resources.
I think this is where we could engage a third-party consultant who could come in with that plan and say, "Find the users that we need to just double-check with and say we don't have to recreate the whole document. We don't have to go through the entire process." But we could do kind of a, you know, we could dust it off with a little bit of effort and a little bit of money for consultancy, but it does not have to be that whole comprehensive plan.
The user survey and the refreshing the document would be...
Would be. I mean, I think they could be connected. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
What was the name of the plan?
I think it was called the South Harbor Development.
2013 South Harbor Development Plan. It's on the city website.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. It just gets frustrating to me, and it's not you, it's just other... I've heard it throughout, you know, the last couple of months. And in my last campaign process, I heard other candidates say, "Oh, we need to have a plan. We need to go through these meetings, and we need to figure out what we want to do." And I'm like, "We did already. We went through that. You didn't live here yet, but we already did it."
Right.
And this needs to be followed. And...
Right. And I think that's my commitment back, is we're done planning. We want to get going and moving. I'm happy to do that. But in order for me to secure the funding that's needed for those projects, I just need to make sure that any plan that I present is the most relevant document that we have, most up-to-date document, and 2013 doesn't cut it. So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be all for taking that plan and...
Yeah.
Or stamping a new date on it and maybe make some minor modifications.
Yeah.
But I don't want to see us spend 150 grand in three months to redo a whole new plan when we already have a great document that...
I can tell you that, for instance, the survey we did around policing, we just wanted to just get everybody's feedback with not a lot of money, didn't take a lot of time. We had results within a month. So that kind of thing could easily be done, especially when you have these very foundational documents already in play that were the result of much community effort. We take that and say, "Okay, this is what the plan is. Give us some feedback on whether there's things that we should tweak, adjust, or whatever. You gather... We gather the information on your behalf, or consultant does. And then you guys look at that and say, 'You know what? We want to do this. You know, this is no longer something we really need to do. We want to reinforce that we want to do this and this. And in addition, now that we've, you know, had seven more years under our belt, there's some things that we maybe overlooked or really want to reemphasize.'" And the public piece of that, again, it could be done very quickly. And it can't slow us down because the money's available now. So I would not be looking at a long, drawn-out public process, but I would be looking for a public process that allowed us to gain that contemporary, relevant information that would guide your decision-making and allow us to move quickly. So, yeah. Because we, with the monies that might become available, we have to move fast.
And yeah, if it's a smaller deal, then I would... I could get on board with that for sure.
Yeah.
And is that something that would be like a joint workshop with city council, or that'd be something that would just, "We have workshops with the community, and they can come tell us what they need"?
I think, just to save everyone time, we would identify the kind of core pieces of the plan so that it could be disseminated and communicated. We'd, you know, draw people to the website, "This is the plan." And then we would have maybe some focus groups or something that would be third-party driven, doesn't require a whole lot of effort and time on your part. Someone else is kind of shouldering the load. Information gets brought back to you, and then you decide what to do with it. And modify the plan and then present it to council and say, "This is our plan. This is what we're doing." And again, it doesn't have to take a lot of time, but, you know, let's say realistically, if we could focus on something, getting something off the ground, and, you know, by the end of March, I would say by, you know, mid-May, we would have everything ready to go.
When's the application deadlines for the grants that you're going to be pursuing?
We don't know. They haven't announced it yet because with the new administration and with all the changes that are happening, the Bill Grant has not yet... they don't have a NOFA out for that. So notice of federal availability is not yet there. Last year, the application was due in May. We're already working on that application based on what we know will be ready to pounce as soon as it's announced. But most of these grants are going to be on pretty tight timelines just because of the new administration, and we're already in March, and they're going to have to fund before the end of the year. So, yeah.
Is it before the end of the calendar year or fiscal year?
Likely, the application will be before the end of the year, the calendar year, not the federal fiscal year. They start October 1st. So we would be... they're going to try to get those applications reviewed and funded so that the FY22 budget would fund it. And then, so they'll be moving pretty quickly, is my understanding. I mean, who knows? But that's where we're at.
Okay. Have you had a chance to look into the PIDP and MARAD programs yet? That's going to be next.
We're actually working on the PIDP as we speak, so... Yep.
So city employees, City Hall is working on funding, those are large-scale funding opportunities. And we have John Bitney down in Juneau who's working on the Harbor Tier One Grant, and we're tracking that really tightly. And we're focused on the Bill Grant through Department of Transportation and some opportunities through Economic Development Administration. So, yeah.
Have you guys had a chance to reach out to the EVOS Trustee Council?
They won't do these kinds of projects. I did reach out to them, yeah, to their staff. They're looking for environmental projects. There may be some connections, environmental restoration. And so the harbor doesn't meet what their ideas of that is.
Okay. Who was it that funded the... I guess it was the Environmental Impact Study for the Shepherd Point project. Wasn't that EVOS?
I don't know.
I don't know. I didn't follow that one.
And then was it EVOS that funded the Science Center building for 19 million?
Yes. They funded that building. They funded this Seward Sea Life Center. They funded a museum in Kodiak, the Alutek Repository. But their focus, and those were long-ago commitments. Now, their current focus now is very... much more restrictive than it was five years ago or 10 years ago. They're really narrowing it down because their resources are narrowing down. So, yeah.
But this was a big municipal...
The Cordova Center.
Right.
The trustees council. I mean, it's not like they haven't...
Yeah, they...
Anything in Cordova.
And, I mean, their website says that we accept unsolicited proposals for any project at any time, so...
Right. And, I mean, we could, it's...
Right, is it?
We've talked to them about the... how this project may be a fit or not, and we've been given very direct instruction that it was not a good fit. We could still submit an unsolicited proposal, but I don't know that we want to spin our wheels on that. I mean, we could, but right at the moment, our focus is on those ones that are low-hanging fruit that we think would really result in a grant rather than... And if we find ourselves short and EVOS finds itself with money, and they're more broadly interpreting what has become rather specific guidelines around environmental restoration, we might find something. But they're looking at those kinds of projects. So...
Has there been any chance to look into clean water for removing the Creosote pilings and replacing them with steel pilings?
Yeah, we actually, I think last year, Sam Greenwood did an application for that if we had gotten any of the grants. It's a loan, so it's not a full-on. But yeah, she actually has an application ready to go.
Okay.
Yep.
And a lot of these kind of... we're layering them on top of each other. We've got this funding source and that funding source, and they have to knit together. We don't want to create a situation where one is negating the other either. So it's a little bit complicated, but we are looking at all possibilities. So, yeah.
I guess one more follow-up question when we're on the topic of the funding sources. Is it going to be an issue if we get approved for the Tier One? Because the, as I understand it, the proposal that was submitted to the state was just the in-kind replacement. It did not include the Alternative Four that PND made up for us in 2017. It was put together before then, and it was just like basically in-kind, exactly how it is right now. That's what was submitted. That's the packet that I saw.
Yeah, the packet we're submitting for the tier because it doesn't cover enough to do everything...
Yeah.
Would be GH and I and part of L. So it'd be in-kind. If that's, I mean, if that's the route we have to go, then it's in-kind, yes. If we had got... if we get the Build or we get the PIDP and we can combine them, then yes, we would do that.
And the way we are approaching the Bill Grant is layering the 5 million from the state on top of that. It's an integral part of it. So at no point would the Build Grant go, "Oh, well, you got state money, so we're going to lower our grant by that amount." We're building it as a larger project than the 25 million from Build and the 5 million from state. And now EDA is looking somewhere between 3 and 5. So when you start layering all that, we may get somewhere between 30 and 35, fingers crossed. So it starts to make things bigger. And there might be other opportunities, again, to looking into developing on the north side. What other things can we do? Do we need to do in order to make it usable space for multiple user types? Or the specific user types that we've identified that are lacking in the harbor? You know, what do we do? And I'm not going to use words that I can never remember around the harbor, but I've heard a lot of chatter. I mean, a lot of people call me, and I'm sure all of you have ideas as well. So, you know, it's really around what do we want to do out there, you know, thinking five years out, 10 years out, and really plan for that so that when we apply for a grant, we haven't locked ourselves into a solution that would prevent a future solution from happening. And that's ultimately what it's about. I like to use the example, you know, those little plastic games that have the taxi cards, cars that you, you know, slide around to try to get it from one side to the other. And if you just, you know, miss something somewhere, you can never get to the other side. I don't want that. I mean, we can't go piecemeal. We have to know that this is the direction we're going and that what we're creating for infrastructure doesn't prevent us from doing something that we also want to do. So...
Well, I'm happy to hear that because that was something I was really concerned with, is the fact that if we got approved for the Tier One, that application was just an in-kind. It didn't include the drive-down dock. It didn't, you know, because it's for a lot less money. So I was concerned that if we got approved for that, then are we going to be held to the fire to do what we applied for? Or can it, you know, can we... after we get approved, can we kind of change and include a drive-down fuel dock and...
The state is flexible. And I will say this, if we only get the $5 million, we have to do exactly what we said we were going to do.
Yeah.
But if we get more than that, it's pretty easy to just make sure that the money applies to the grant that we said. So at some point in time, if we get $30 million, I'm going to guess that we're going to do some work that will satisfy that state grant, and we'll be able to write that narrative and make it work. So I don't... it's... this is my area of expertise, and I'm really comfortable in this arena, my background.
Do you think if we get the money, when it happens, and all the different pieces, at that point, we'll be able to negotiate for? We've done our new survey. We've met again. We've got our plan as refined somewhat in that. Exactly what we said we were going to do...
Yeah.
That money is still spent in improving the harbor and meeting our needs according to new survey. No one's going to be...
Well, I mean, we just have to have a rationale for why it happened. Change orders happen. Things happen. Oops, you know, we realized that this was more important. You know, a huge storm came in and took out A, B, and C docks, and it's more important to do those. I mean, I know I don't... I'm not using the right words.
Things are changing.
Things change, and these slow processes, they have opportunities. You just have to document the hell out of it, and you have to make sure that you are still moving in a direction of accomplishing the end goal, which is improving the harbor for the users and that are an economic driver. So, yeah.
On this grant from the state, if you get the... we get that, and like, say, the federal loan thing doesn't come in until five or six years down the road, and that state had to be... money's got to be used before then.
Right.
But you're going to have to start this project anyway, or you lose that money.
Right.
Well, I mean, yes...
So you're going to tie yourself into something as well.
And I hope that we have a plan that, again, back to that little taxi cap game analogy, is that we have a plan in place that whatever work we do now isn't going to prevent us from doing other work later. It may change and morph, but I promise you, we're on the tail of this Bill Grant, and if it...
That's what I was trying to say. We're stuck with the plan we give the state until we get that other money. So we're going to have to go with that plan, and at a later date, we get the money. We're going to have to make sure everything we do fits in that previous plan.
I mean, I know there's been talk that we're going to kind of cork ourselves if we just do GH and I, but not necessarily. I mean, we can go back and still cut that dock. If we put into the plans part of that, that don't bring the wires of water across that area, dead-end them here and here, then we can always cut that later on. It might cost us, yes, a little bit extra money, but it's not going to be millions of dollars. The way I look at it is that if all we can do is GH and I, we got to do something. I mean, if we don't, we're not going to have it.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah. And then the EDA grant is what we're looking at for the drive-down.
It's a bigger grant. We're going to have to add to that somehow, and that's...
Yeah. E D A?
E D A.
Yeah. I guess so my big concern was just in the two proposals that I saw that have been submitted, and I don't have the current ones. I had the ones back from when I was on council. And, but what I saw was the one that was submitted to the state before, and that was the one that the governor didn't fund. And, you know, now we have a new plan. I was just assuming it's the same, but maybe it's a little different. But it was, like you said, an in-kind on those three floats. And so it didn't achieve, you know, in the Build Grant, we were changing H to have more 60-foot slips because we need more big-boat stalls. But it didn't have that. And then it also didn't have the drive-down. And it didn't have in that plan to cut L and make that, you know, those 20-foot slips accessible. And I thought those were like huge cornerstones of that Alternative Four plan that needed to be, I guess, like what I really want to do is see us do maybe GH and I and the drive-down first, and then we, you know, do the other ones later. But I don't want to see us, you know, replace that approach and then have to go tear out a brand-new approach to put in a drive-down. Or, you know, I don't want to two-block ourselves. And that was, I don't know if you saw the video I produced, kind of describing that for my campaign. I had it on my Facebook page, but...
And that's the plan with the EDA, with the EDA grant, is that that would be incorporated at the same time.
At the same time, so we...
Right. So if we can get both of those, just those, we can still do the drive-down. So the approach, when you change it, you change it once, like you're saying. You don't want to do it twice. So that is the plan right now.
Okay.
I mean, for me... I mean, for, for me, I'm pursuing the funding, how you guys work the puzzle pieces on the ground, and what's the most important thing is really, that's where your guidance comes in, and that's where your knowledge is really critical, is making sure we're not, that we're not writing the wrong grant application, right? We're going to paint the town blue, but you guys want it to be pink, and we've screwed up, you know, so our, our goal is to make sure you guys have the money, the community has the money needed to make sure that this rebuild happens, and, and if it needs to be done in stages, that we, we stage it in such a way that we don't destroy infrastructure that we just put down in place to make something else happen down the line. So they have to be really knitted together tightly, and, and I promise you that those grant applications are going to require that as well, which is why, back to, you know, 2013 harbor plan, I know we still haven't accomplished that plan, but let's make sure it's the most relevant document that we can provide to anybody who asks, so.
Do we need a motion to review our plan and look at options for a user survey, or?
I mean, I can put it as a note, if you want to just, if you want to review that for the next regular meeting, I can put that on there and.
I think that we should get started.
Our next regular meeting's next week.
Week after, right, yeah.
If that accomplishes it quick enough, I'm, I'm all for getting, you know, I even talked about it quite a bit in the camp, in my last campaign, and it was, I wanted to form a step-by-step plan to work these grant applications to where we're not two-blocked into the state program while we're waiting for five years to get a federal thing, and then all of a sudden, we, we have a new approach, and we don't have a drive-down dock, and we don't have, we get a bunch of 50-foot slips and we need 60-foot slips, and so I would be all for getting a step-by-step plan established and sent on to council. I think that would help them, because.
Yeah, and I think, in, in getting back to one of the conversations that's later on your agenda is around Forest Service and Shoreside and other users, I think what I would find, you know, I'm sure council would be helped by this too, but I think it could help your causes really say, we want the most, that the motion that you might, or that the agreement you might put forward to council is, we want any solution that you're considering, have the most flexibility built in with the shortest timelines to allow us to do this major development plan that we're totally in the midst of. Because like you guys, we don't want to lack a solution that would prevent things from happening that you all have identified is to the benefit of this project, all because a lease is coming up right now. You know, it's like, let's, let's buy ourselves some time. So to me, that's the most useful instructions to council, because they will be the ones that have to direct negotiations around any lease. The Forest Service, as I said, is willing to have a conversation around a shorter-term solution, and, and I think that could provide that flexibility you guys are looking for. The other thing that you might do is if you want to instruct, direct, advise that you want to go ahead and update that plan, that 2013 plan, we could get started on finding some solutions for that with contracted consulting that might be able to do that, so. But that could be done at your next meeting, but that's, that's something that I think would be, you know, a good step to add to the process.
Helen, I don't know if you're going to stick around for.
Yeah.
Later discussion, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, because I had a, I just was curious if there was anything in our resolution that we passed that was not, you know, didn't, didn't explain that position pretty clearly that we, city staff, Forest Service have been agreeable.
Okay, well, I'll be here for the whole meeting, so we can.
Okay.
We can talk about that.
All right, so, any other questions for Helen, specifically regarding, or regarding the, what, the, the plan, or the options for funding? Sounds like, and I agree, that if there's any time to ask, like, get your ass game completely dusted off, because there's going to be, there's funds around.
I just wanted to clarify, when you, you know, we were talking about the South Harbor Development Plan, but you also mentioned that we should do, thinking about the North Harbor too, so we should kind of include that altogether into one plan, is what you were meaning?
I mean, maybe not. The South Harbor Development Plan, I think, if there's any changes that you guys want to make in that, it needs to be done like yesterday, right? Because we've got applications that are in progress, we have a state grant, we have an opportunity probably to do a little update, like, in the next week. So we're, we're going to assume that your self-development plan and the plan that Tony has been working with us is the plan that you want to go forward, and, but, but, but when we start talking about the North Harbor, I haven't seen a, you know, and maybe I'm just missed something, but, you know, I, I just want to make sure it's the most relevant thing, right, at this moment in time, because there's more users involved in that North Harbor side, and the types of things would not be normally what your fishing fleet might require on the, on the South Harbor, you know? The average doe doesn't care about C, D, E, F, G floats, right? But on the north side, you might have, like Shoreside, their interests, where would they put a fuel dock? Where would they put fuel tanks? And what, where would the EPA and others require us to do certain things? Where, you know, I've heard people say, we don't want any fish processing offloading in the harbor itself, we want those in other locations. I mean, I've heard every conceivable thing, and I'm sure all of you have, have as well. So the question is, is what makes the most sense, those puzzle pieces? And if, if you had direction on that, and I came to all of you with funding and say, okay, we have an opportunity to do X, Y, and Z, it would be useful to know where those things might fit into your plan.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Jake on the phone, anything?
No, it sounds pretty straightforward, what you need to do.
Okay, moving on to harbor master.
I guess, I've got one quick question. So do we want to make, I don't, I don't know what it needs to be, do we need to make a motion later on in the next meeting agenda items? We can put that on our next agenda, but is that something that we're going to want to kind of make a decision and get Agnew Beck here for that meeting, so we can get this can kicked instead of kicking it down the road? We need to, you know, if you need it done yesterday, let's get it done.
Get it, see if Leif might join us and have some input on that.
Test, okay. I mean, we can start talking to Agnew Beck as soon as we want. I don't think it requires any Harbor Commission action at all. I mean, I'm hearing people kind of support around updating that plan, so I think we can just get rolling with it, really. We've heard the concern that the Harbor Commission wants to play a role with that, and, you know, we want to get the harbor users really involved, so I, I think we hear you, and me and Helen have been talking about this quite a bit, so it's something we can get going as soon as we want.
We could, maybe what we could do is make, we could start that process, get some inquiries together, figure out who does the work, what the cost might be, and bring it back to you guys if you want at your next meeting.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Leif will do that.
All this work is all on the south side, nothing on the north edge, where the science center is and all that?
I think some of that needs to still, we're, I mean, we've just barely talked about what we kind of need, you know? We were talking a lot internally about the North Harbor, because, you know, with Shoreside's letter and the Forest Services' letter, it became apparent that for the north side, while we do have some kind of plans from the South Phil Development Plan, we really need to take a closer look at that, and just as you guys were saying, really talk to the harbor users and the Harbor Commission more, because I know that South Phil Development Plan, that was before I started working here, but a lot of that really was more on the South Phil area, you know, not, not the harbor. And I think we're at the point where we need to drill down and focus on more specific areas, and, and the North Harbor is really the area we should be looking at the most. I think there's, you know, I think we're moving forward with the South Phil, or the South Harbor with some of these grants, and, and we'll be going back into that, but the North Harbor is really something we need to be talking about. And that includes the uplands as well, you know, and, and what you do with, do you try to do sheet piling and all those sorts of questions?
Yeah, because that seems where the changes, if we're going to, if we're having that plan, would be on that North Harbor, the north side, because most of the south side stuff's pretty well planned out, I think, that, that north side up there where the science center is, that area, where Forest Service is, whether, you know, them docks, where you're going to put all that stuff, has got to be thought out, but.
I thought that was in our master plan already.
Well, we got a basis, we like to do this, we'd like to do this, but there really isn't any.
When I was looking at it, what vision needs to be done over there wasn't included in the master plan at all.
Maybe we've just talked about it a bunch and everywhere it got written down.
You want to go fishing in June over there, you have to, you know, my house is closer than where I can park my truck over by the harbor.
So we, at city can, we'll start that process and try to get some kind of consultancy contract figured out for your next commission meeting.
Yep, we're at the point where we need to get a scope of work together for a consultant, and, and maybe that's the next step, is we'll work on getting that, and then bring it to you guys to see if there's anything that's not included that should be, or, or if we're good to go.
So you could email the scope of work, and we could have input before the meeting, or will?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we have not engaged any conversations with a consultant yet, so I'm sure as we kind of have some preliminary conversations, yeah, we'll have something for a packet for the meeting.
I think we also recognize that this is very timely, because the fleet will be starting to emerge and, and get on the ground as they get ready to go out fishing, and if we can catch them and get their feedback, and, and before they leave, basically, for the summer and aren't available consistently, that would be the most useful thing. And, and in terms of timeline, as for our grant applications, it would work too, so, yeah.
So is this something that, so you envision us doing like a whole kind of harbor basin plan, or do you want like specifically a South Harbor replacement plan, or is that South Harbor replacement plan need to be part of the overarching, I mean?
I, I think at this point, we're so far down the line with South Harbor, if there's tweaks that need to be done, let's.
Yeah.
Look at those. But what we need to really focus on, like Leif was saying, is the North Harbor as well, you know, the kinds of needs that need to be met. And again, back to, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to put ourselves in the wrong place so that future things can't help us happen, so it would give guidance to everybody. It may not be specific, it might not be that we're going to do this here, and this here, and this here, and this business is going to be here, and this business is going to be there, but it might be that, I don't know. But I, I think updating the plan, so again, I don't remember the specifics of the, of the earlier plan, but making sure that's the most current thing, and then building on that, if there's missing pieces, we can do that.
Yeah, because I thought we had pretty well flushed out the PN, the PND Alternative Four was obviously what we wanted to do as far as the South Harbor, so.
Yeah, and, and again, we've been pursuing funding based on that plan.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I would hope it wouldn't be.
I think that was done in 2017, I guess we just didn't have some sort of a formal document besides the photo. You know, we had a ton of meetings about that, so I guess.
Well, I mean, if we got the build and we got the big money, that's, that's where we'd be going, you know, if we get that and a lot of other money, but, yeah.
Yeah, if we need to formalize something and, you know, make it like a step-one, step-two, step-three plan for the South Harbor, I, I, even if we don't get all the money, I want to see us work towards that, it might just take us 10 years to get all the money, so like, let's do it systematically, and so if we need to get that, have Agnew Beck write that down on paper with a 2021 date stamp on it, then that's, I'm all for that.
Yeah, we can, we can have this discussion over the scope of work that we would ask them to do, because again, I don't know much of what you're saying, I'm just listening and thinking, I have no idea. But you do, and so let's dust off the 2013 plan, figure out whether there's an update in 2017 that changes things, and if there needs to be any more updates, or if we're just all still rock solid, this is what we need to do, this is how we're going to do it, and we just bring it forward again. This is our plan, and it's current, and it's had, it's been vetted, maybe not as extensively, well, certainly not as extensively as the first time it got put together, but it doesn't need to be. The document exists, it's, it, it still has relevance, because we need to do this work, and we just want to reaffirm, you know, the South Harbor's pretty much set, but, you know, if there's things in the North Harbor that we want to revisit, or we're all excited about, or whatever, I, I just need the confidence to know that this is, this is where you're at, and where the community's at, and the users are at, and we're, and it's 2021, yeah.
Sure, and if it's on the city agenda, and it's there, and people want to come and have input, that is their time, and we'll have a updated plan moving forward. Are we done with Helen for a minute and go on to the harbor masters report? Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, Tony?
I didn't throw it, I just reiterated that list I gave you guys last time of what we've been working on, and then the bottom in the box is other items, so since the last meeting, we've been working on. We had a meeting with the EDA and also the USDA to figure out what the USDA offered. They don't offer a whole lot, most of them are done, they don't do true grants, they do loans. So they're an option, maybe if we, we really need to, but we really can't afford, if we take the bond and then have to do a piling grant, I mean, loan, and then also USDA, that the kind of money we'll have to be paying, doesn't sound like we'll be able to afford it without getting crazy with rates and everything, or some kind of other plan. So, but the EDA, sounds like they're going to have more money than normal that they may be able to give us, and Shirley Kelly is the person that Curtis has been working with, and she seems like she's more than happy to give it to us. I mean, granted, it's not all up to her, but I just keep telling Curtis, send her roses and chocolates, whatever it's going to take, you know, so. Solstice AK is working on some of our NEPA stuff for permitting for environmental and wildlife and mammals and all that. And then Northern Economics, we had a meet, meeting with them, Mike Fisher, so they're going to be working on getting our cost-benefit analysis up to where the build grant people say we need to have it, rework it, tweak it a little bit, and get it where the thing should be, to make us more competitive in that grant, so. Yeah, so. Yeah, and then I'll, we talked with Turnigan Marine Construction, Jason Davis over there, they do the bid-build, normal build, construction. Since we didn't understand it, we wanted to have a meeting with someone that does it, and then we got some connections with jobs they've done. Supposedly, the, the bid-build, yeah, bid-build, design-build, you can usually save up to 25% cost by doing it. Still don't 100% understand it, but I've been talking to a few other harbors that have done that way, and they seem to like it that way. The onus is more on the contractor, if they don't give the right information to the designer or whatever. It tends, I guess, from what I understand, reduce the amount of change orders that cost the city itself. So if they bring in only 600 feet of piling and realize that we need 700 feet, that's not on us, they just, they didn't estimate correctly, and they have to pay to get it here, not us, so. That was one of the kind of examples they gave us, so. Sika's done them, Onalaska's done them. I talked to Homer, they did a design bid-build, and just on pedestals for their 100-amp big ship dock, and that hit them in the butt on that one, because the pedestals were wrong and wouldn't handle the equipment, and it cost them quarter million dollars to the city, just to send all the pedestals back, because they didn't give the right information to the engineer or whatever, so. So we're still looking into more of that, but if we can save a little money and get the same amount of job or same quality, then.
Saddles the responsibility.
What's that?
Saddles the responsibility.
Yes, yeah.
Around one entity and cleans up the.
Yes.
Miscommunication.
Correct, so, but yeah.
Ooh, yeah.
There's, of course, other things been going on, like snow removal and everything, but I'll get your report. I'll get your report next regular meeting.
Snow removal?
Yeah, it's hard to believe.
How's the sweeper working?
We, so it was a little too much snow for the sweeper, but we have tried it out a little bit, just those couple small spots over there and seems to work well on the wood dock. We looked, used it on the approach up there just to try it out, but the heavy wet snow, yeah, but.
Need a snow blower.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Lots of stuff going on there. Brings us to new business, North Harbor Future Development Discussion.
So I did bring you a map. Jake, I sent that to your email, hope you got it.
Big map.
And I numbered them just to kinda keep us in the right area in case it's hard to follow along, one, two, three, four, so.
So, okay, we, these areas that you have delineated here, Tony, are they, are you talking about, obviously there's three approaches and we've got four, are we looking at the areas?
Yeah, I just kinda broke it down to the areas of, you know, one is the Science Center area, that whole dock area, and then you have the loading dock, Forest Service, whatever you wanna call it, and then the other approach across from Cordova Outboard and then that corner by.
I gotcha.
Yeah, I just kinda thought I'd just throw a number on there if it'd see if it'd help.
Well, didn't we have some drawings where you had kind of a plan out, kinda where double line of parking there and then shorter ramps?
We do have a conceptual drawing of cellular sheet pile that was done by PND back when I think, I don't remember his name, but he was here during the spill too. He was the interim City Manager for a while. More.
I was over there kinda measuring it out a year or two ago, looking at stuff for the best use of the space there. And it looks like if we put a bulkhead, you know, along the dock there and maybe even remove some approaches, you get a row of parking that goes front to front end with the existing parking there. You'd have another row of parking that would go towards the harbor and it would still leave you about 35 to 40 feet of space that could be like commercially leased businesses where you could have storefronts that were like along, you could have a restaurant or whatever along the front that faces out towards the harbor and still greatly increase the amount of parking that was there at the same time. And the, I'm not sure how we would do it with leasing the property or the space or something, but it would be, it would save us money because like how we just had to replace our whole approaches and stuff, they get worn out over time, they take maintenance. If it's dirt filled in there, it's not gonna really have much cost over time. And we'd also be able to recoup some costs from the leases or sale of the property to the businesses that would be able to use it there at the same.
Like in Seward, all theirs waterfront is all leased.
What was that?
Seward.
Yeah.
All their waterfront is.
Down south, it's really common and lots of, you know.
They're all long-term leases for the most part, except for maybe like little mom and pop stores, but yeah.
Yeah, little gift shops, restaurants and stuff.
Yeah, we looked at it, I know Sam Greenwood myself, I'm not sure if Leif went over and looked at it, but might've been before he was here. We took measurements and we figured we could fill, if we sheet piled, we could fill out 60 to 70 feet, get green space along with whatever, you know, we're talking about stores or pop-up shops, but also you'd end up with double the parking over there.
Could we have like a little boardwalk with a railing along the top of the bulkhead for doing the north, you know, the North Harbor sidewalks that's been talked about for 20 years?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's part of that is that you would have, you'd finally get a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of a little tiny path.
Then we could remove sections of the railing for snow removal in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you can't legally dump it in.
So, this is where Ellen.
Actually, you can, you just have to get a permit.
Ellen, will you tell us how much money we have to spend on this?
They do it in Whittier and Valdez.
Two billion dollars.
So I like Mike's idea, I think we should go ahead with that, do as much as we can. I mean, that's, we've got, I mean, that's the thing with coming out of these plans, a lot of times it's, you know, it's like, oh, you have a pie in the sky plan, you have a, if you have some money, sometimes you're trying to stretch it the furthest you can and improvements. But parking is definitely a problem over there. Anything we can do to help with that, obviously ringing the harbor with, you know, leasable lots, however small they are for different, all kinds of different businesses and activities would be long-term benefits. It was very expensive sheet piling when we last looked at it.
Yeah, cellular sheet piling is a little cheaper. It's rounded, you don't have to drive down as far as it ties into the earth as it comes back, but yeah, it's still very expensive.
Valdez has, right, in there.
Whittier.
Whittier has it?
Whittier, cause they pulled their docks right up against it. I don't know Valdez.
I think Valdez has it too, cause they've been tied up there and I remember looking at it and it was curved, wasn't straight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's all in the way you anchor the.
Yeah, yeah, it's easier to anchor it, so don't have to drive as much downward.
We've got a, a layer of fill on top of mud.
No, it's a breakwater underneath that.
Right, there is a breakwater, right? And then it goes to the, a mud fill situation on the other side.
You're dealing with rock when you get down into that road.
But we've got a breakwater that we can attach to.
Yeah, we can now, cause the Army Corps doesn't care about it, cause we built the road on it.
Otherwise, they'd be upset.
Yeah, we brought them over and looked at it and they were like, you're good.
Yeah, cause that's the old breakwater where that road is.
Yeah, yeah.
Breakwater Avenue.
Very good, Mike.
So we have another problem.
A problem.
At the shipyard with derelict vessels, we start stacking them.
I'm not running the meeting, but moving on.
Back to sheet pile, okay, darn.
So, I mean, let me just show, we got two things that are definitely coming up. One is the Science Center.
That's what I was.
So that one in the next hopefully year or so.
Three years.
It'll take a while, but yeah, they're gonna be.
Will have to be a decision that I would guess that planning and council will be asking Harbor to weigh in on, what to do with it, what to do with the dock itself as in the platform. So, and then you have the discussion that is the resolution too, which is number two area.
When you did this dock here, you found a lot of stuff that wasn't right with it.
Which one are we talking, Science Center?
Crane dock, one of you just replaced a decked and you had to replace half the timbers in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that dock is newer than that. You got a new decked on that going out to the Science Center, but the everything underneath it is older, older than what that.
That stuff was really good. The condition of those end pile caps and everything were in really good shape and the thought is, yeah, the thought is that it's higher, it raises up out. We don't know why, I mean, that was one of the thoughts, is that, yeah. Andy?
That's a big area that dock cuts off. But you can't do anything behind it.
Kenny?
So I was talking to my dad about this this morning and I was telling him, you know, how the pilings, when we redid the top, you know, when we redecked it with Wilson's last year, that the pilings actually inspected good and I was surprised about that. And he, he said that, well, that doesn't surprise me, cause that's the new part. And I said, what do you mean it's the new part? And he was like, yeah, they put that in 66. I was like six years old or eight years old, he remembers when they did it, but where the Science Center actually is, is the old part.
Right.
So that's gonna probably have more issues than what the approach had, cause he said that's part of the original pier that ran from the reluctant fishermen straight out there and then they took that out and they put in, the approach was put in new in 66. So that's, that was something I didn't realize is that the actual end part.
Yeah.
The single dock that went way out there.
Yeah, so that end part where that Science Center building, that's pre-earthquake and then the approach was post-earthquake.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, so in the old photo, that's the old dock that burned.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I did look just from the boat at the pilings under the Science Center and I hadn't gone down the approach, but I was also thinking, wow, before we get too busy with cranes or anything up on top of this, we need to do a pretty good look at, there's some.
Yeah.
Racing is gone and.
It's a long ways up there too.
It is long.
How much you wanna spend on stuff that, you know, was rotted halfway underneath or something.
Right, no.
Even want in there.
Yeah, that was my original thought was, well, we just put a hundred something grand into that approach. I'd hate to see us rip out the grid, rip out the dock and then dredge it because we're just losing, like it seems like every year, maybe not every year, but every decade, we're losing more wharfage infrastructure, you know? We don't have the chugatch or whatever it's, we don't have the orca plant anymore. That was huge back in the seventies and eighties. We, we really don't have, Fisherman's Camp isn't a usable space anymore like it used to be. I mean, you look back at some of these historical photos and some of these piers and it was, you know, crab pots and boats tied up all over the place and now it's, we've got the old Coast Guard dock and we've got the ferry dock and that's about it. And the loading dock is pretty small that, and now it's capitalized by small processors and in the summer, the, the old Coast Guard docks capitalized by small processors. So as far as the fleet goes, we have the three-stage and that's, I mean, that's the old ferry dock. And so we're, we've already made a plan and we're moving ahead using some of the 2016 disaster funds, give that a facelift, that's great. We talked about that a lot and I'm happy we're doing it, but I would hate to see us rip out that Science Center dock, I mean, tear down the building when they leave and maybe fix up the dock, but I would like to see us turn that into some sort of a usable space for the fleet. If it's a, you know, if we put a float onto the bottom and then put a crane on it, but see, I don't know if the dock can handle it, that's, but that's what I would like to see. I don't wanna see us rip that stuff out because they're, the grid, even though you can't use it for a big boat and we can't really, we can't replace it because of the different rules on grids, you can still use it for bow pickers, you can still use it for small sane boats. People are still using it, so I'd hate to see us get rid of it. Those aren't really the boats that are, you know, I could see the grids as competing with our travel lift, so if we're looking at this from a business standpoint, we wanna get rid of the grid so everybody has to haul out, make more money, but at the same time, those bow pickers aren't the ones that are gonna be hauling out of the travel lift. So it's not really competing with our travel lift, like I originally, I think I mentioned that a couple of years ago, I said, well, let's just rip it out because we'll get more lifts, but then when we lowered from a 50-foot limit down to a 40-foot limit, we got all those lifts anyway, so. Yeah, I don't know, I guess that's kinda my thoughts on the Science Center part. I would like to see a floating fuel dock in the harbor. I just, what I see is the ideal location for that is right where the Forest Service is, put the tanks under the parking lot and pipe it underneath the loading dock and that's, you know, have their float in the exact footprint where the Forest Service float is. And that's kinda what I envision. That way we can keep, you know, we're not losing any more infrastructure. We can facelift the Science Center dock into a usable space and we can achieve a fuel dock and not go backwards.
The, let's say we look at that dock and we figure out where it starts to be not worth maintaining and we cut it off and, and it's just a finger sticking out, but it's a drive-down finger, one side is tidal with the, with the grid. I don't know, is there anything that we could do with that basin? Dredging is, what, what are our options?
It would definitely take a lot of dredging, yeah.
Take a lot of dredging.
Yeah, I mean, it goes dry over there, I mean, the old barge shows up.
So what about, another thing we've always been trying to find is place for landing crafts. Is there anything we could do there? I mean, we don't have much land upland-wise, but is there anything we could do there where we could make like a landing craft beaching area because?
I mean, yeah, I mean, that all depends on what you decide and whatever else.
That would take less fill, or I mean, less dredging.
Yeah, but if you wanted to bring it all the way, you know, yeah, it depends what you're talking about, once you get to the land part, you don't wanna take away even though it's not a lot, that little bit of parking there.
No, I would say extend it a little bit and then make a landing craft ramp.
Where they could hang alongside the pier.
And they could hang alongside that pier.
And then drop their door.
Also, another boat could come in, especially on the tide, and then take things from boom truck or whatever off that if we don't have time.
I don't know if you'd wanna.
Put a crane on, but a crane would be handy, but.
Can I make one just observation or recommendation? Let's just put it that way, is as you're thinking, think idealistically if you wouldn't mind, because if you're viewing your planning based on the possibility, oh, it's too expensive, I think that's a limiting factor that I would encourage you not to do. And I only say that because I'm just agreeing here and acknowledging that I'm willing to go out and go to bat and try to find the money. I mean, it may be that we have to adjust, but if you say the best solution is to dredge, but it's too expensive, so we're not gonna even look at it and it prevents you from considering things that you really wanna pursue, let me be the one that, you know, if after researching funding opportunities, I come back and say, okay, we can't afford to dredge, but we at least are trying. So I, again, I'm not trying to be a Pollyanna, but I don't, I just don't wanna feel like you've cut yourself off from possibilities because you don't think there's money available because I'm a, I'm a, I find rocks and I find money under them whenever I can, so I will, I will work really hard towards that. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but I just don't want you to limit your thinking at this moment in time yet.
Well, I mean, we've got to where we are.
Yeah.
By dredging and filling. We've got to where we are with our harbor by dredging and filling. So I think it still needs to be part of our program going forward and part of it is maintenance because we're filling in all along the side over here. A lot of these slips are becoming less usable, especially low tide, outpickers are getting bigger, they can back out and hit the bank, right? And that wasn't there when they put the harbor there, so. So, I mean, I think dredging to some extent has to be part of our plan.
Definitely.
And that, that area there is, is, that area there is good for dredging and then anywhere else that we extend our parking, sheet pile or not, however we wanna do that, we, we had one meeting where you brought in like four different methods. There was some.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sacks that were built up and there's other things. Anyways, whatever we do would benefit from dredging if we could use that inside space more and we could, and anyways, our harbor's continuing to fill in.
Well, if we came up with all that money to dredge that area, like you're talking, then you use that dredge material to fill in between two and three and four, once you put sheet pile in, just like they did everywhere here, and then you place, you know.
Except we didn't do sheet pile. Did we do any place?
No, no, I'm just saying if, if we did that.
Yeah.
You could, cause I mean, as you know, the toe is very big on the, a breakwater, so any kinda land to keep it holding back.
I, I almost think that we should, when we're looking at long-term planning and stuff, you know, I know that we talked about the floats and stuff in the North Harbor and I think that you said that they had a 25-year lifespan when we put them in 14 years or so ago.
Oh, right, in North Harbor, okay.
North Harbor. And just one thing that I keep thinking about is, is that we are gonna need some decent amount of dredging when that harbor comes back out of there again. I know people that have sane boats on sea and defloat that only draw three or four feet of water and you sit on bottom and you're stuck in your stall for a couple of hours at the bottom of the tide, so.
You are.
It's, you know, and that's not very deep of a boat, so it's definitely gonna need some, a bit of dredging next time we can get in there.
What did they dredge, sorry, what did they dredge five years ago?
Only out in the middle because it's considered navigable waterway.
That was the core engineers, yeah, the West Marine.
That was a long time, they haven't dredged since I've been here.
No, it was not too long ago.
They haven't done it since I've been here. I've been here nine.
Yeah, and we, some of it was contaminated and the dump trucks went over to three-stage and took them out to sell in the landfill and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
But that was core engineers, they do maintain.
Yeah.
The G flow.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, there's a, there's a channel that they maintain and they came in and dredged.
Yeah, that was 15 years ago already?
Ten or eleven years.
I thought, I thought, yeah, I thought it was like seven or eight.
But anyways, that was clamshell dredge.
Yeah.
But anyways, so Helen, if we have an area like that and we say dredge and fill to provide more parking and kinda come up with the concepts of what we're trying to do, we're trying to make more usable space for boats and usable space for cars.
And your, your needs assessment identifies we don't have enough parking, we don't have enough, you know, opportunity for, you know, folks with landing crafts, whatever the, the needs are, and I can go out and write a grant that says, these are things that are essential to the health and wellbeing of our community and the economic engine that is our harbor and we have to provide for them and we write a grant and we figure out what we can do. And, and then with, you know, there would be the dredge option, the sheet pile option or what. And, and then with, you know, there would be the dredge option, the sheet pile option, or whatever the options are. And, um, most people, I mean, in my experience, funders aren't going to say, they want to know what you want to do and they want to fund it so it can happen. They don't want to say, you know what? I don't like, you know, sheet pilings per se. I want you to do this and so they're not going to do that. So we come up with a plan. It's justifiable. We have a solution. We have a budget and they're either going to fund it or they're not. So we'll, let's just see what we can do. But again, I think there's some, going to be some opportunities the next couple of years that if we know that we want to do this and we can get our act together and, and know that that's the direction we're going to go. And it's, it fits into the longer term strategy. It doesn't cut off any opportunities for us. Then let's put it on the table and see what we can figure out.
Okay.
What about shipyard? Is that something you want us to look at as far as, uh, improvements for funding sources that are coming up?
You guys defined the priorities. If you think harbor is the priority, let's pursue that. Um, shipyard, there might be some funding that is specific to those sorts of things. But I think from what I've seen is a lot of them are privately owned shipyards or municipally. I, I, I don't know. I don't know that we have met the criteria yet for shipyard. And, um, but you know, if that was a direction you wanted us to pursue, I would certainly look for funding opportunities. But you'd have to say, this is what we need to see done based on what our user needs are. Um, otherwise I, I couldn't find anything. I, I don't want to do a, we're doing this project because there's money available project. I want to do it as we need this. So I'm going to go find the money project.
I think, I think we could, um, without getting into the designing or re-portioning space at the shipyard. I think something to keep in mind for funding is the shipyard is any way to, um, raise the level of the land. It's just too low for
It goes awash.
I think that that, yeah, I think that, that that could fall into any sort of, um, you know, climate change or building resiliency or building back infrastructure that was, or that's threatened or anything like that. Because to me, I see that as, yeah, there's a lot of things we could do as far as moving things around or doing stuff. But if there was any money to bring that level up while there was fill around or whatever, that would be a, I think a overall thing for the shipyard. It's just too, it's too low. You know, and big high tides.
Settling over here.
Almost a wash.
I won't be able to lift up your tug if we go up any higher.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyways, that's, I, I, that's, I mean, just to, something that seems like it might come up as a funding option is something that would help, especially with villages being washed away and stuff like that.
They're going to be building that Shepherd Point Road and they're going to be using a lot of landing crafts. Somebody's going to have to figure out where to put a landing clip or either that. We're not going to have a boat landing or launching boats over in the North Phil. I mean, over here in the, they're going to tear it to pieces.
Well, they already, they used the one down by, uh, Carcass Point last time they offloaded. Harris used that to offload the big equipment of the state did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they had that big.
I didn't even, what is, is there anything there to make that better? Or did they just pull up to the rip rap and drop there?
I think they pulled up the rip rap, kind of like they did, um, when, uh, the big red one, I think it was, it came in and dropped off paving equipment, was it? Last year? Can't remember. They pulled up to the shipyard and they just, they moved a little bit of rock and then they just dropped the rampant high tide.
They drove their pilot in and stuck the boat there and then they use a crane to unload it.
Yeah. Anything that we can do to make a spot that a landing craft can pull in here.
They're going to need it.
They're going to need it and they have been needing it. And what they're doing right now is not working for the rest of everybody.
And keeping the small.
Break our dock.
Keeping the smaller landing crafts away from the boat launches would be a good benefit to everyone. I mean,
Yeah.
You tried to launch your boat on a day when a landing craft's just pulled up and you have to wait six hours and it screws everything all up. And then they kind of damaged the ramp a little bit too.
Yeah. We were lucky last year when they did the pavement, when they had it tied up all day. It wasn't an opener.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so I like Andy's idea of doing the sheet pile or the Mike's idea of doing the sheet pile parking in the North Harbor. Um, I, I could go either way on the dredging number one to make room for a floating fuel dock. I, I just want to see us pursue a floating fuel dock somewhere. I don't want to see us rip out infrastructure that, because we just keep losing and losing. And it's like, we never get it back. So, um, but then as far as the shipyard goes, I would like to see the city pursue a public, private partnership. And, and I've, we've put it out to bid in the past and I just did not like, that was back when I was on council. I didn't like how it was put out to bid and I tried to get some momentum going, um, to do more of like what we did for the Science Center where it was under fair market value. Basically a land, you know, we've tried in the past, but it was a land trade, um, where we wanted to sell them. So what we put out to bid is we'd sell them the mud flat and we'd sell them the rock and we'd take half the land. Of course, nobody bid on it. We need to give them the mud flat, give them the rock and we'll take a quarter of the land or something. And, you know, adjacent to the shipyard so we can get more space. And then also it will help incentivize more business. And I don't, I mean, we probably won't get any bids, but we had like multiple letters of interest in the past. And, you know, there's about 12 acres of mud flat there that, and then there's the rock quarry right down the street. And then there's a rock quarry across the road. And I was really hoping to get something going before they did this, the repaving of that road. But now that's, I mean, that's going to happen this summer. So it's kind of a, we didn't get it done in time. Nobody, nobody bid, but I just didn't like how that was put out to bid. I thought that we should, as a city, let's give, if, if you're willing to fill it in and give us some land, that land is your payment. Everything, you can have the rock out of our quarry. You can, and you know, we keep the land after it's mined. We still have the quarry. It's our quarry. We're just giving them the material. And then they get the mud flat and, but we're doing a, you know, 20, 30, whatever. That's what their bid would be. How much percentage of land are you going to give us? And, uh, that would kind of be their purchase price would be how much land would we get after it was all said and done? And that's how I wanted it to go out to bid. Um, we didn't quite ever get around to doing it again until I got off of there. So if that's something, you know, that's not really a grant, but maybe that's something that the city internally can just put it out to bid again in a fashion that might actually attract a developer. And there's talk about natural gas and people didn't like the company and, you know, that's, then there was a fish processor that showed some interest and then that didn't happen. And then there was another fish processor that showed some interest and then it didn't happen. And so I don't know. I just, uh, I would like to see us get an expanded shipyard any way possible. And if that's a way to both incentivize economic activity and get us some more shipyard, then I'm all for it. So.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that we're out of space currently though, like it's not compared to all our other needs, expanding the shipyard. Like you said, if you can do it, win-win situation, it's not going to hurt, but.
My take on the shipyard is it's more cyclical and it depends on how the fishing seasons are going. Like a few years ago, when fishing was doing good, we were way short on space at the shipyard. The last couple of years have been very poor. And it's kind of led to people skipping jobs and stuff like that. But I'm hopeful that we'll return to, uh, some better phase, one of these.
I, I mean, I was just told this morning that to go, I was thinking about doing just a service lift and then now I'm going to go and actually get put on blocks for a few days to install a transducer. Um, I don't know if it's snow related or if it was because it's full, but basically there's no available spaces on the plugins. So I have to go over, away from the plugins, which is fine because I have a portable generator. I don't need a plugin. It's whatever. It doesn't matter to me. But I can still get my work done without being plugged in. But that, I mean, that's an issue down there. And we've talked about putting in electrical pedestals. I think staff's already working on that. So.
I'm just wondering as far as, is, I was just, I was, I was trying to prioritize it.
Yeah.
There's things we're doing down there. Space right now isn't the biggest one, but if something could happen where we could gain more space eventually.
Yeah.
And at times we have been short.
I just.
We did have, and we're working on less long-term stored vessels.
Yeah. I think that the rates, you know, you change, you know, you raise the rates.
It doesn't seem to change the ones that are a problem.
We're making more money. It's a win-win. You raise the rates, we pay them, we make more money. They don't, we get rid of their boats.
They got to pay first.
Yeah.
Leave them there and you owe them.
But anyways, it's, it's a.
I guess for me, the end goal isn't just to have more space, Andy. It's to, I would like to see us maybe incorporate the landing craft ramp down there, but in a grade that we could do airbags and you can pull out big boats.
Yeah. No, that'd be good.
We need more space so we can get those big boats pulled out.
The problem with the landing craft ramp in area one is that the uplands are pretty scarce there.
Mm-hmm.
But if, if you're just coming and going, there's less traffic there than there is over here at the three stage. And if you were able to have, uh, poke in, you'd kind of like, could poke it towards that intersection. And there's some room there to maneuver things. And there's a parking lot across the street and just, you know, it's not the worst place, but.
Does Ocean Beauty own that little beach between the old Coast Guard dock and that city?
City owns that.
That city.
Yeah.
That seems like, the only limiting factor is the amount of space between Ocean Beauty and the corner of the dock, you know, for bigger landing crafts. But that seems like that place could have some.
They own, they own basically that whole corner of that lot, except the city kept the beach. I mean, I think there's a.
Oh.
We sold the lot one block free.
And kept the beach. Yeah.
Yep. It's a seashell park or thing.
Yep.
But there, there isn't access.
There's a very, there's like a walkway access, right?
Eight or something like that. It's like a
There's very little access.
A walkway. Yeah. Cause that is a nice beach for landing crafts.
And then seeing people.
And it's out of the current.
Taking sane boats and stuff over there.
Yeah. I go, I lay in there. It's nice, uh, nice spot to, uh,
Need to charge him.
Dry up. But it is too bad because maybe, is there anything we can do about that?
No. Like that guy over there.
Because if they square off the back of theirs, I mean, that beach, that could be an access point.
Yeah. But I, I don't know. I just know we have the beach. I don't think there's a whole lot of access area there, but I don't know a hundred percent.
It'd be, I mean, if we had 15 feet, it'd be plenty for, it'd be skinny, but at least we could get stuff in on our landing crafts right there. Okay. Well, that's a good idea. Is there any chance, Leaf, you could check into what exactly amount of space we have there so that we could see if there's any way that we could make a path and? Okay. Thanks. Do we want to talk about the, um, oh, this is coming up in old business. Okay. So anyways, North Harbor Future Development Discussions. Anything else anybody wants to add to this? Before we move on?
I was just going to say, I can bring you the conceptual drawing. I wrote it down already. Next meeting on that sheet pile that P and D did for us over there.
I would like to include, you know, if we sheet pile, I, I, I mean, I don't know how the drawing looks, but I would like to include a boardwalk from wherever we sheet pile over to that easement in between the two reluctant fishermen buildings. So that way we can get that traffic off that ADF and G corner. Cause that's a safety hazard. And if we can get, what's that program?
Trails is the trails program you're talking or?
There's a Forest Service Trails program. There's also, um, Sam's gone like multiple grants off of it. It's a safety one.
Okay.
Um, Safe routes to school.
I, I don't know if it's safe routes to school. I think that that was one of them they looked at, but there was another one that's all about walkways and stuff. And that's, I think how we got part of the second street project that we're kind of pushing ahead. Um, but yeah, exactly. Something like that. Just, just so that people can walk and not have to go around that corner.
Do we own a strip behind the reluctant fishermen?
We do. We own all the way down to, to Tidewater.
Mm-hmm.
It's a city easement. That's where the old dock used to attach and go straight out to the Science Center. And that's why they have the sky bridge over the city easement.
I got you.
Mm-hmm.
So, um,
That's why all the city plows always are going down plowing snow.
Yeah. It's a great, it's an awesome snow dump area. But yeah, I just, I want to, if we're going to do anything in the North Harbor, I would, I just want to get, because there's a ton of, of the industry workers that are always hanging out there. And I'm, when I'm towing my boat over to Cordova outboard, I've almost hit a couple of people and it's just, it's just a matter of time, especially if somebody's walking there in the winter. Especially because it's like, I'm, you know, I'm about to tow my bow picker from there and go sea trial with my new engines. And I'm kind of nervous about how icy the roads are. So if you go around that corner and there's a pedestrian there, you're creaming them, you know, or your jackknife in your trailer and it's just sketchy. So that would be something I'd like to look at.
And so that would put the pedestrian traffic under the sky bridge?
Yep.
Or can we continue it over to the three stage? That looks like private property for a ways.
Least way.
It's leased to Trident. So it would have to go up the sky bridge and then they'd, then they'd, you know, have to walk alongside the street. You know, that, that might be an area that the city could look at putting a sidewalk in the future. So.
There's at least a lot more room along here to walk alongside the road.
Yeah.
It is. Yeah. And that gets them to the post office and then spills uptown. So that's probably where they're going anyways.
Yep.
Okay. That's good. That's a good
And just.
Recommendation.
Yeah. I mean, there, there's other grants. It's like a walkability grant or something. I think that's how they got, I can't remember what it's called, but.
We'll look into that. It's a good idea. So.
I, I would really like to see us pursue having a boardwalk all the way, you know, it wouldn't be able to connect by Trident, but having one on each side of the harbor, connect to the breakwater. And then the other side, you know, kind of like what Valdez has where it has interpretive signage. This is a sane boat. This is a tender. This is a gillmutter. This is a salmon. And so that way, when we do have potential cruise operations or whatever, we're going to get in the future. They have somewhere to go and like learn about what we do and I guess watch us work. I don't, you know, I, I'd also like to see the, and this is back to the South Harbor side and we talked about it, but it wasn't included in the P and D drawings. Um, that Fisherman Memorial Park, they kind of just put parking over the top of it and I didn't like that. I wanted to keep the, the Fisherman Memorial where it's at, fill around it, put grass, put a couple of food truck stalls, picnic tables, make it a park, public space, you know, moms and their kids can come down and play right on the waterfront and watch their dads pull up on their boats or, you know, it's.
That's part of four.
Yeah, but it wasn't in that four, it wasn't in the photo. It was part of it. We listed that, we talked about it. But it wasn't in the photo that I saw, but it was part of the written plan, which you guys put into the build grays. We talked about how parks would be, you know, maybe score us some more points. And so that's, but definitely want to see that pursued as well. And it could kind of tie into having a boardwalk around the harbor. I know that the public would appreciate more space to, you know, access their waterfront and enjoy it on the few sunny days a year that we get.
Enjoy it in the rain. Fill, dredge, sheet pile or otherwise, I don't, I would nice, would be nice to have, um, yeah, I wonder if, what is the best, um, the cell, what do you, we call it? Cell sheet pile?
Cellular. They call it cellular sheet pile.
And I think there's, there has been some famous collapses of that and trouble. Um,
I don't know. Okay.
But I'm sure there's, but anyways, there's, whatever the best way is.
Not the cheapest, the best.
The best.
Right.
Exactly.
Get you accidents and problems and repairs. Right.
But I'm for, I'm for filling and dredging and making more space.
Well, I think we all.
And ours.
I think we all agree there needs to be more parking.
So.
Pressure over there is really bad.
That comes, I guess, where we could land disposal maps. Is there anything that, um?
So can I ask one question now?
Yes.
Um, would you like to, this to be brought back and do some more thinking on it next meeting?
Yeah.
From this Matt?
We'll, we'll have.
Cause I mean, it's definitely, we're not done here.
A review?
Yeah. I think we need to see those conceptual.
Right. Need to see all our plans and.
And then I, I think the intention is that when we, we, you know, finalize this new 2021 harbor plan and hopefully quickly to get it to staff so they can get these grant applications written. I think the intention that I was understanding from Helen is she wanted us to include. I think the intention that I was understanding from Helen is she wanted us to include this North Harbor stuff in that plan. So.
Well, it, I, I think for immediate, we are working focused on South Harbor. If there's any updates that you want, um, I have an opportunity now before we submit build to change anything that you might see. So there's an immediacy with the South Harbor. And maybe it's perfectly fine. On the North Harbor, there's opportunities for projects that are ready to go. Um, so maybe you prioritize, say, you know what, these are things that we need to do immediately, short-term, you know, next five years. Um, maybe it's the sheet piling. I don't know what it might be, but I could, I could then with the plan in place, you know, maybe it's not totally locked and loaded, but in general, this is the direction you want to go. We could look at projects that would support the direction you're going rather than potentially interfere with something further down the line. So I just want to make sure that, and nothing we're doing now will interfere with something you want to do later. Um, so if sheet pilings is going to support a lot of different things and gives you a, a clean slate to work from, we could go forward with that. And if, 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 if I had the document that said we've, this is going to be a platform from which we're going to build into the future and this is what we want to do, then that's easy. That works. Or if dredging or whatever. Yeah. I don't want to make this like so huge that you can't tackle it. Let's just make it manageable and bite-sized. So just update, make sure you're locked on the south side because we, we are going to be applying for grants again. And if there's any changes that need to be made, we do it now. And on the north side, if there's immediate, short-term projects that would help support your thinking, um, that you could say honestly that we have community support, we need more parking, we need, you know, trails for safe access for our industry workers. Um, we need more of this, we need more of that. And this is a platform from which we can build in that direction. That's great. Even if you don't yet know.
Yeah. Yeah. Understand?
So I guess the one thing that I, I mentioned a couple of years ago as a concern, you know, when I was talking to my dad this morning, he actually brought it up. Um, if we get the build grant and if we get rid of the airplane float.
Yeah, not if.
When, okay, so when, when we do the alternative for South Harbor plan that everybody wants, the drive-down float is going to eliminate the airplane float, which is also the net mending float. So we're going to be getting rid of a net mending dock that our fleet, that's one of the most utilized pieces of infrastructure in the harbor, and they're not going to be able to do the net mending on the drive-down dock. That's going to have to be a rule. So that was, you know, another thing that was, you know, we're going to need to look at putting either a new airplane float or a new net mending float somewhere. And so that could be something that could go in area one. Um, I know I, I talked about, well, why can't we just fix our existing airplane float and move it over where the Forest Service is and stick it there? That was one option. Um. And I think Andy, you said is basically so worse for wear, it wouldn't be worth fixing. So then I, I think we kind of dropped it and nothing really, we didn't really talk about it again. But that is something that I could see as a liability of the build grant plan. And so when we, when we update it, or, you know, when we update our needs assessment, I don't see anybody in the harbor wanting to, to lose their net mending ability in the harbor. Um, I also would like to see us pursue a sane alley dock, like they have in Sika. That thing's awesome.
Sane alley dock?
Mm-hmm. So it's like, you could do a full stretch. It's got stanchions that like, there's aluminum pipes that, that are.
Hang the wires on.
Yeah, it's like, you hang up, they, they don't have wires. They've just got a pipe every fathom that has like a little space where you can set your cork line and tie it on. And then, so you pull the one side of the dock and you pile your net on it. And then you pull around to the other side with your boat and you attach to the end of your sane and you, you know, with your block line, you block it back onto your boat and it yanks it down the dock and it's just a flush dock. Just like how people do on our airplane float from side to side sometimes.
If you ever go into LFS when they're working on stuff, it's basically just having that system on a dock.
On a dock.
Yeah, and it's, and, and the Sika they've got, it's, it's like two sides. So you have two saners working on sains at the same time. So if you've got like a major project where you catch a whale or you catch a reef or, I don't know, a puker runs over your cork line. It's, you know, you, you can come back and fix it in a, you know, get it square. You need to be able, you know, square it up, hang it up and get lacing real fast. And uh, right now that's very difficult in our harbor. And I think that's just because of the shared space with the gillnutter and the sane fleet. It's like you can pile your sane on the dock, but then there's going to be a gillnutter on the other side. So you can't really stretch it across. And sometimes you can in July if everybody's fishing chums and, but it, it, it can get difficult for sure. So that would be something that I would expect to come up in a needs assessment and maybe some we should consider for that area. Then, yeah, and the airplane float portion, you know, if we get rid of our airplane float, then where's Cordova Air going to park in the winter when they're trying to fly supplies out to our hatcheries?
They don't anymore.
They don't use it.
Yep. Yeah. Well, lately, but.
I mean, they've got, they've, they're not using it.
Yeah.
Because it's easier for them to pull their plane out and leave it. And they've pretty much stopped flying in the winter now. But, um, but yeah, somebody, uh, an air service could use it, but it, it's in pretty rough shape. Um, I think it probably was the better thing is to keep it on their little dolly trailer thing and
Yeah.
tuck it in out of the wind behind Baja Taco there. But, um, yeah, anyhow, uh, the airplane float, net mending float is definitely a, a thing that we have talked about repeatedly with the drive-down float being a better service. But where are we going to replace that? And Brandy brought up a, at one point, like a float on one of the skip places on the inside or something like that where we could do net mending. So anyways, I think there, there's a lot of ways to possibly solve that. Um, doesn't need to float very high. It'd be nice if it was lower and was. Anyways, it's hard to put it up on a, you know, on a wharf, let's say.
Right.
Uh, but that corner or some of the underutilized inside spaces. I don't know. But I think we should keep that on our list. Is there anything in particular we needed to do with the land disposal maps?
Uh, just needed a nod from everyone that they were good with what was there.
Um, I was just curious about the one on page three where it says available. I thought that we were trying to make that piece available like for that possible, possibly the building that Hein was talking about. But when we discussed that, they were more wanting not that front corner, but the back corner.
Right.
This is in the wrong place. I just wanted to make.
Yeah, that, this is just where, um.
That was where Jerry's.
Yeah. But I mean, if they put a letter of interest, it still goes and then they can decide how much they want. I know they just passed a letter just recently, the other day, Life sent it to me. Um, was about, I don't know, half of that, Life?
Um, yeah, they request, they did send in a letter of interest a couple of days ago for a 60 by 100 foot. Um, you guys were talking about this last week and wanted to think about where the available area is on the maps. It kind of seems like it makes sense to move that available area just to the southeast so that it's along the Orca Road section. So if there's just kind of a general concurrence with that.
Yeah.
Um, because this leases, or this letter of interest is going to be moving forward. That makes sense to me and I'll, I'll share that information with the planning commission.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Any opposed to moving this available chunk towards Orca Road?
Yeah, um, I'm not opposed at all. Um, I just, yeah, this chunk I want to see made unavailable because we were talking about putting electrical pedestals in for, and then.
Just built an outhouse or?
Yeah, now there's an outhouse on it too.
It's not an outhouse.
It's not an outhouse.
It's far from an outhouse.
It's the most expensive outhouse you'll ever go in. Besides the one at Esther on the beach.
Yeah, that one's expensive. But, um, so yeah, I would like to see us make a smaller chunk available next to the road, but then take, you know, half of that red area, make it green next to Orca Road and then the green area and then the other half of the red area, make it all red and then we can put in electrical pedestals. It's kind of what I was thinking. That's what I had envisioned. So I think that was what we discussed.
Okay.
You know, something like, I don't know if you can see it, but something like that, that would be made available and the rest of this would be electrical pedestals.
Yeah. Do you guys all see that? So, and that is large enough to accommodate a 60 by 100, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so. Maybe we could, we could step it off and look at, yeah.
Okay.
Could be roughly that, like half the size of what Jerry had.
Yeah.
Um, the other ones I threw in because I remember someone asked, I forgot to put one in, so I couldn't remember which one. So I just threw the rest of them in. Um, I think it was the North Phil is the other one that you guys asked about.
Phil I'd asked for, and I see that we have, uh, got that cleaned up, I guess.
I would like, um, I would like to see us submit a request slash a resolution to city council that the harbor could, uh, take over the impound lot and use it for trailer parking.
This would be the red parcel on the corner in the Sora Lane and Jimpor Avenue.
That one's a source of.
Okay, the only reason I'm chuckling is because tonight we are actively, we, we are presenting a proposal for um, finalizing the impound lot for use as it is being used at this moment in time. So, um, Leaf?
Yeah, I think they have.
Yeah.
I've encouraged the planning commission to pay attention to that presentation, um, tonight and, uh.
You all might want to too, um, because if there's any desire to use that in a different way than we are currently using it and plan to use it more permanently in the future, it now, it's now or never kind of a thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, this has been something that's gone back and forth probably five times, five different land disposal processes over the last six years. And we're kind of at the point now where it's really come to a head with public safety and them having to use that area basically as an impound lot due to their security requirements. Um, so they're, you know, trying to look at a way of making the impound lot actually usable for an impound lot. Um, so it's kind of coming to a head. So if you guys have any views, now's the time to, to get those out there, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to use it, uh, then great. But I just, we kind of talked about it when we gave up the Rob Brown lot that we were losing trailer parking and I mentioned it at the time I was on council that I wanted to see us kind of, you know, yeah, well, you know, we'll move our trailer parking off the Rob Brown lot so the city can sell it, but we want the impound lot so we can at least get half of the slips back because we lost some, you know, we lost area. So um, it was talked about at the time, wasn't ever pursued. It just kept being a junkyard. So, um, yeah, if you guys have plans to fix it up and actually make it a nice impound lot, then that's fine by me. But I would just, I think that could be done out next to Eagle. That was talked about as an opportunity for an impound lot as well.
So, so tonight you'll have the opportunity, if you want to listen to council meeting, um, all of the options that have ever been presented for the impound lot will be talked about, pros and cons and why they are usable or not.
Okay.
And, and a solution, final solution presented as an option for council to consider. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I definitely think it's worth bringing up as an impound lot. Doesn't necessarily need to have ready access to a launch ramp. But, uh, anyways, that's, that's a.
You never know, they might impound a boat.
They might impound a boat. Anyways, that's another discussion. So, uh, anything further on the, oh, and I'll just say that, you know, it might be something we kind of keep in mind or, uh, the other part, parcel down here next to Bayside, the blue parcel that's leased, if that ever that lease ever ends, that might be another place to put trailers.
Oh, you mean Rick Schultz's piece?
Yeah, currently leased, Urquenosa. But anyways, if that ever comes up for a lease in the future, that might be a good spot. Kind of have a pull-through trailer yard down there. All right. Uh, anything further on the land disposal maps? So you have voice vote written here?
Whatever, voice vote.
Do we need to vote on something?
Voice vote.
Yeah, just vote on whether you agree with the maps. And then you can also mention the, um, one you were talking about, the change on the shipyard. Just, I was just looking for a nod or whatever, but yeah, usually a voice vote's good because, because Jake was on the phone, I figured we'd get a voice vote on it that you agreed with the maps.
Okay, so maybe we, uh, we get a motion to, um, accept the shipyard, uh, lease option presented to us and, uh, land disposal map recommendation as discussed.
Do we, do we want to ask for, submit and ask to council for that before they spend money and make it an impound lot?
Well, we can't ask it tonight, but.
If you guys at your regular meeting next week pending the discussion tonight had a recommendation for that, you could put it forward at your next meeting. It would still be timely. I don't think we're going to take, we're not going to take actual action tonight.
Okay.
I don't think, right? Nope.
Okay, so, uh, how does everybody feel about, uh, requesting the current city impound lot to be, um, used as trailer parking?
I was, I was just going to say that it's not available right now. So I mean, it's not like we're changing anything. It's still going to be not available even if we ask for it.
True.
Yeah. So we're not going to change that.
Not available. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're not accepting the map. Okay. It's not available. We're just.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Because it's kind of like anything, it's available until it's asked for or not available, either way.
So I think we need a motion in order to vote on this.
I move to concur with the land disposal map recommendation as discussed.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, you want to do a roll call vote or we just do any opposed?
You can just do yays and nays.
On favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I wasn't opposed, right Jake?
I was in favor, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the ayes carry, um, moving on to old business. Uh, this is a new resolution. I thought this was originally when I looked at our original resolution. But basically this resolution with the Forest Service pretty much is as open-ended as can be about being flexible and, um, we have an unknown amount of things. I don't know why.
The only question I have on that is, is that really the fair market value is what they offered? Is that?
Life, that is the thousand dollars.
That is the fair market value.
It, it seems like the market value is based off of land property, but if you look at like the square footage of space versus how much I pay in the harbor for my boat, like that's the best deal that anyone has ever gotten.
So that value is what came from, um, that's how the city used to calculate values of land. And we've recently, with our last few land disposals, moved in the direction of actually getting an appraisal done on the property. Um, but the price, the fair market value gets determined by city council.
So just to be clear as we're discussing this, they are leasing the land underneath their float and ramp and their boats and the space on top of the wharf that is covered by their building, right? Okay, let's just.
Yeah, they own the dock.
They own the dock. They own. They own the dock. They own the pilings. They own the pilings. They put them in. Do they have electric and water down there that?
I think they have electric in their warehouse, but yeah, I don't, I don't.
We're supplying now. I don't.
I don't know if they, I think they have water down there, but I'm not a hundred percent.
And it's pretty shallow. Especially that one corner is, it's pretty limited to their. Anyways, so.
Pay for a thirty foot boat, you know?
Yeah, I know. It's, it seems, it seems like, yeah, it's, it's definitely a good deal.
Not our job, you know, right?
Looking at the, uh, map doesn't look like they're renting the space under their boat. They're renting the space under the dock.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you look at the actual.
So we should charge them mortgage too?
Yeah. I mean, why don't we charge them per boat like we do anybody else?
We charge them for a boat, right Brandy? For one boat? Is that what we do now? Okay. Okay. Couldn't remember. That was a big discussion. There was lawyers involved in that one. I found paperwork on that.
So this resolution was not what I had in mind, um, when we. Moved to bring this up on the next agenda. There's some, some whereas's that were in previous resolutions that. Are missing from this that I would like to see added. And then, you know, I, I was hoping that we would set a short term. Timeframe and kind of give them notice of our intention to. Pursue development in that corner like we did with the science center. Couple of years ago, you know, we gave them a drop dead date and that's. Kind of what spurred them, the city council did anyway. And so we just recommend to city council, but city council gave the science center a drop dead date. Your lease is ending this. Date of this year, you need to have a new building. And, uh. I think that was sometime in twenty twenty-two. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I could.
Now that was for their storage debt.
Is that?
I'm, I'm sorry. What was that again?
Is that true? Did, did city council tell the science center that they had to move by a certain date?
I'm gonna have to ask Leif to answer that because I wasn't involved, but I will say this is that city council. Instructs staff to go into negotiations and, um, provides the guidelines by which they expect us to negotiate. So if it, if it was like, you have to be out, but I, you know. The reality is a science sitter probably has missed that deadline, whatever it was anyway.
Yes. And the reality is that councils change and, and, and what happened was a, I believe a five year lease was negotiated with the science center for their space. You know, anyone, including them, could. Ask to renew that lease for another thirty years and there could be a.
Another discussion.
Yeah. So.
New council. Yeah. Well, thanks. Okay. Thanks. I just was curious about that.
So, so as it stands now, I think, um. If you give general guidance that you want maximum flexibility, you. And not knowing a timeline for when adjustments and changes might be made because of grant funding that will allow us to do certain improvements. You know, we would negotiate. Accommodating what you as harbor commission and the users felt was most beneficial to, um, to all involved. I think we still do have a harbor, uh, a need in the harbor for forest service and where we put them, I, there, there could be options for us to look at alternatives for that, but. Again, that would be driven by your planning and how we move forward. So, um. But I think it's generally acknowledged that city, the council has said, we believe that the forest service is a good partner and we want to continue that partnership. And there'll be an expectation that we will find a solution, whether it's, you know, another. Lease, long-term lease with the forest service at this location or another location. Um, there's general interest in having a good relationship with the forest service. So. And we can definitely consider short-term lease. So, uh, that is, that is something that I, I would, I would advise against driving a, a specific solution, but if you give general guidance that we want. Maximum flexibility. We want the option to move as we need, um, and blah, 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 so that you have the opportunity to do the things you need to do in the harbor without the. Ball and chain, if you will, of a, of a lease. It's going to prevent that. We can make that happen.
I think that was, um. And thinking back on discussions at the time and also reading the letters we wrote coming up to this and. Learning them that this was going to end, that we were saying, um, that we wanted, uh. Flexibility as we figure out. How we're moving everything around over there. So, I mean, currently their boats are pretty. Very easily accommodated in the harbor. And, um, if we have to move something around or something. Everyone agrees that. We want to make a place for them to tie up and make it. Amenable for them to continue their operations here. So. Does anybody have any problem with specific language in this resolution that?
Yeah.
Change?
I, I mean, I do. Uh, Mike, what were you gonna say?
I was just kind of, where I get held up is at the very end where it says, says flexibility as to the term. I got, I've, I felt like in our earlier discussions and stuff that we were, you know, more. Thinking of, you know, trying to keep that under two or three years. And I feel like you could interpret flex, flexibility. As to the term is a lot of different things. I thought maybe we should be a little bit more specific in that.
I think the driver would be a project with, which is funded that had a timeline. So as soon as that would be known, like we are going to install. The sheet piles in two thousand twenty-four. If we, as soon as we know that, we can go back to forest service and, and the goal is to. Have a contract with them that would allow us to renegotiate. So. You know, not knowing a project, not having a timeline for a specific project that would impact that dock at this moment in time, I think. If we build in the flexibility that says, okay, now we have a project, they are going to need to be moved by this date. We can go back to them and say, we now actually know how this is going to play out, but. Without that knowledge, let's say funding isn't going to be available to, for eight years or six years or whatever. You know, a two-year lease doesn't help you or anyone else.
It just doesn't seem like we know enough at this time to really make a decision like that. And I'm just looking at the like risk benefit of. What if we do do three-year terms on their lease? We, I mean, if we're not ready and we haven't come up with stuff, we just give them another one of those at that point in time. So I. That's what I was just trying to see the downside of doing a shorter term lease like.
So my understanding is that with the federal government, and you can well imagine this, is that. To have a longer term lease with an out clause is easier than negotiating. Three-year leases every three years or two-year leases or whatever with the federal government, just because of the, the types of contracts and negotiations that are involved at the federal level. So. I think from an administrative point of view, it'll be easier for us to say, let's say. We'll do a ten-year lease with you, but if at year one or two or three or four or five, we do a project that will require you to vacate the premises, we have that option and we will exercise that option and we will provide these opportunities for you to. Be relocated.
Once you.
That's the understanding.
Once you guys negotiate this with them, is that something that we're going to be able to take a look at and?
No, I don't.
So, I mean, once we approve this, it gets negotiated and it's kind of out of our control or.
Right.
You know, what happens, happens after that kind of.
Council's the one that approves it. We just make recommendations.
That's, yeah, totally.
And, but, but your advices are, are very, I mean, they inform the, the types, they're the platform from which we negotiate. So again, my hearing, because I would be the one, Leif, I, whomever would be the one negotiating. I mean, I hear very clearly that it's got to be maximum flexibility because we don't yet know a timeline, but we know we have projects that we want to pursue.
It's just hard for me to understand, I guess, to, that they. Seems like it's not acceptable to do a short two or three-year term lease, but. We could give them a twenty-year lease that we could put a clause in that we could get out of at any time and.
Right.
Just having a hard time understanding.
It's about how complicated the federal government is when you're trying to negotiate leases with them. If it's just you and me, yeah, we could do a two-year lease and just keep rolling it. But every single time a lease expires, they have to start all over again and do the whole process.
Like the bureaucracy of all.
It's a bureaucracy and I think, um, my discussions with Steve was that. He was totally amenable to the notion that. We don't want to lock ourselves into anything that is going to prevent the most appropriate, you know. Work to be done in the harbor. But he said, uh, you know, do we want to do this every couple of years? It's, it's a very long process and it's, it's. It might take as long to renegotiate as it does to do the damn lease just to begin with. So. As long as we have a legal out, which my attorneys, our city attorney says, we do have the opportunity to do that, that gives you the, all the flexibility you're looking for. Let us, let us negotiate the right kind of lease with this.
So when you say an out, then would that be like a contract that like at our sole discretion, we could exit that at any point in time? They would not have to agree to it. We just. Say, sorry, the lease is.
It would be for very specific reasons. It's because we need you to vacate the premises for a construction project for the benefit of harbor. We couldn't say to them, we need you to vacate because we want to put a sauna on there. So there would be.
That's a big balance.
Hey, there we go.
Not a bad idea.
So. We have another letter of interest from a. Company that's going to bring in revenue to the harbor and the city.
But it's not available, right? It, it, I, help me understand. So right now we have an existing contract with the forest service. They've expressed interest. Want to renegotiate. So right now we're in. In a position where we need to renegotiate with the existing entity. I don't believe that, well, you explain it because.
Just to back up, you know, we're so early in the process. That we haven't even been authorized to negotiate yet. There's been some kind of general consensus, you know, at the staff level that we know we need some flexibility. We know we're looking at. A fair market value, but. But we aren't even at the point yet where we can really negotiate even a term for an out. You know, ultimately maybe the term for an out can't be agreed upon and things end up where we don't want them to be. But we aren't even at yet the point where. Where we're even able to really negotiate and spend time looking at what would be in the contract.
So he was asking about whether Shoreside.
Yeah. And so, okay. So for the process for land disposal, when a lease ends, then the land becomes available. So in this case. We notified the forest service that their lease was coming to an end. So they submitted a letter of interest. After they submitted a letter of interest and you guys had your resolution, then we received a letter from Shoreside. And that's, you know, included, says they'd be looking at that property.
So since the forest service lease is up, did that automatically make that available then?
Yeah.
So, oh.
So it's available, but, but behind all of this, there's a lot of legal considerations too, because they actually own the property. It's not like a lease where. You know, you, you rent an apartment and when your apartment is done, you can leave. There's a physical structure on.
So what is our legal obligation by having them owning the structure on the dock there?
Yeah, that's something that we haven't really gotten into yet.
We can tell them to move it.
That, and that's something that city council really needs to consider when they. Are, you know, at that point where they're negotiating or looking at a lease.
I think one of the things that, and this, this kind of drives the conversation, um. You know, is that the right space for a fuel dock in our harbor and whatever associated shore side, um, things that would have to be installed to make that possible? I don't know the answer to that question. Cause we haven't really considered that plan. I mean, it could very well be that. That is the perfect place for shore side. It might be that there's another location that we haven't even considered because we haven't really done the whole planning. Process around that side of the harbor. I'm not trying to pass judgment. I'm just saying. I think we owe it to ourselves to buy ourselves a little bit of time to go through that process of planning. And, and, and if there's a need for a fuel dock inside the harbor, let's make it happen, but where? And not just because there's an available this or that or whatever, but we, we do need to accommodate and we are investigating what our legal obligations are in terms of. Ownership of that, um, those improvements that were made by the forest service at that site, what obligations we might have a city to. Provide replacement for that if we choose not to do, um, a negotiation. And again, we haven't started that because we. Are waiting for instruction that it's now time to start negotiating, maybe with forest service and shore side simultaneously. I don't know, but council would instruct. And, and for me, what the bigger question is, is what do you as harbor commission think is in the best interest of the long-term? Needs of the users of the harbor and how do you want to see that developed? And that helps guide rather than just responding to a single individual or an entity that wants to use a facility, whether it's forest service or shore side.
So, yeah, I mean, we're talking about. Getting our plan tightened up and doing a bunch of work on the plan. There's no way we could. Put this off until after we have the plan. We're trying to do this.
It seems like, I mean, the lease was up a while ago.
Yeah.
What, i- is there any pressing issue that makes this need to happen right now?
Well, we have to work out some sort of agreement with them because right now the standstill agreement, which basically kind of extends that lease is due to expire and. You know, at some point, the federal government isn't going to be too pleased that they don't have some sort of security on. Pretty large asset for them. So, you know, it's something that city council at least needs to be looking at and coming up with some sort of an agreement. You know, for whatever term.
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess I just. You looking historically and I'm not saying we don't need to find a place for them to be able to do what they do here. It's just. With that fifty-year. Lease that we started with or whatever it was. How long was it?
Fifty-five years for one dollar total.
That we have, they haven't been compensated for their improvements, um, and that we're, um. You know. It's hard hearing that they're in the driver's seat as far as, well, the federal government won't like this when. You know, we, if we need more time to figure out what we're, what is the highest and best use for that space, then. Obviously. We don't want to be in any long-term arrangement. We don't want any sort of, um. A feeling that, uh, we're going to have to replace. Infrastructure or we're going to be held liable because we didn't, um. You know, have, uh. A security they needed to have access to their boats or whatever it is that, that is, um, that's making this so difficult. I kind of liked the five years that we originally had passed as a compromise that the three was probably. Realistic before we'd have a chance to really get in there and get after it with any grant money and stuff to, to make changes. So. That five was kind of, um. You know.
Yeah.
Stick that we could probably say that we're not going to do anything for five years, but if we have. Anyways, if you're asking, my opinion is having outs, not knowing what those outs are. And having them be convoluted in, well, if you're going to make them move that dock, then you have to provide. You have to provide a new dock or you have to do anyways, just seems like there's a lot of.
It's just a hard thought to think that we're going to be penalized and have to pay for all this when we've given them a, you know, decades and decades.
I think, I think this conversation can be, maybe we can just focus a little bit more on. Do you as a harbor commission feel that, um, the forest service should be in the harbor and do you think there should be a place for them? And that's the highest level. The specifics of what's negotiated, um, a- and then furthermore. If they stay in their current location, do you want a certain amount of flexibility? It, I'm hearing yes to all of those things. And what the outcome looks like and how it's negotiated will be determined by council and the forest service. With every hope. So it might be five years. It might be two years. It might be a year and a half. I don't know. It could be ten years with an out if any construction projects happen. It could be 10 years with an out if any construction projects happens and you lose access to everything and we're not going to replace you. They may, they, I don't know what the terms would even remotely be, that has to be negotiated. So, I mean, maybe they'll give up their firstborn children, I don't know, let's, let's find out. So, and that is part of the negotiating process. But if you give us clear guidance that we need maximum flexibility around when we start projects, where we put projects on that side of the harbor, and no matter who's in there, that's what we need, then that would become a basis for the negotiations we would have with the Forest Service. They may not agree to those terms, they may say, we're done, we're going to go somewhere else, I don't know where. But that's part of the process, yeah.
Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so what you were saying is, you know, do we want them in the harbor? I would say, obviously, my answer would be yes. What's the proper place for them in the harbor? My answer is the state dock. They haven't even called the guy who does the state leasing. I did. He said he'd love to have the Forest Service park there.
Well, and that might be part of the solution, that as we negotiate, we can say, you know what, we think there's another place for you in the harbor, we'd like you to explore that. I can't say that to them now because we, we aren't in negotiations. You guys could say that to them, you could go to them and say, hey, but they're not going to do that unless they know that we're seriously asking them to go down that path. And again, it, it's so difficult when we're not actively in negotiations to have any conversations because it doesn't, it's not real.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I guess to go along with that, we did, I mean, so that's one of the whereases that's missing out of here, that I was in the last three resolutions that we made about this. And that was whereas the U.S. Forest Service vessels could potentially share secure mortgage with the Alaska State Trooper vessels at the Alaska State Dock in the south side of the Cordova Harbor. That was a whereas in the last resolution, it was a whereas in the resolution we gave them in 2015. So we're now six years into trying to warn them that we want to do this, and then they come back and they ask for another 55-year lease. It's, and so that's, I guess where a lot of my frustration comes from, is that we've been telling them, hey, five more years, and then that five years is up, and now they're asking for 50 years again still? They don't, it is, and so then we, we told them another five years, but then COVID hit and it didn't get passed by council. So now if we tell them another five years, then really, we're giving them six years from what we passed last year. And Shoreside's been expressing interest since 2013 repeatedly. They can't start their process until this is marked as available. Everybody says, oh, we need to see drawings and we want to see their plan, we want, well, they can't, they're not going to spend the money to get those drawings made and to get the plan made until they know that there's even going to be a spot available. So I would like to see us, and I understand the need to extend this lease in the short term so that the Forest Service can make their plans to move, but I would like to see there be that date of, okay, we're going to give you three years, at which point we're going to proceed with our expansion of a floating fuel dock. And that will give Shoreside what they need. Okay, in three years' time, we're going to get to start building our fuel dock, and so then they can go and get those drawings that everybody wants to see. And I know it's, it's like an egg before the.
Yeah, so.
For the horse thing, and it's.
The biggest thing that I would like for you all to really articulate is, is that the right place for the floating fuel dock, given all the other opportunities in harbor at this moment in time? And I'm not just saying floating fuel dock, for any, any infrastructure, what infrastructure makes the most sense and what, what areas of the harbor? We're only looking at this particular piece of property, we seem to be hyper-focused on it right now, and maybe that is because you've already made that decision that this is where this kind of infrastructure needs to go. I just haven't heard that, and so it's, it's a little bit more difficult for me to wrap my head around it because I know there's EPA rules, you know, and there's going to be a lot of stuff, but once that infrastructure's in place for the floating fuel dock, it will never move. It will never move. So you guys need to make sure that that is exactly where you need it and want it and think it makes the most sense. Forest Service is easier to move because, you know, aside from a federal 55-year, you know, contract, they could go anywhere, but a floating fuel dock can't. So it just, I'm just asking the question, you may have already addressed it and answered it, but I just want to make sure that council feels comfortable knowing that you guys have had a considered talk about it and know that this is the best and most appropriate place for that thing to be located. So that is the one question. And again, back to council, I mean, you can, the difficult thing is, is you're, you're talking specifics of the contract and, and council has to help drive that with your guidance, but, I mean.
Right, well, I mean, it's difficult. You're asking us.
Yeah.
To comment, and, you know, we have some specifics here, so we're trying to.
Yeah, I mean, if you want a five-year lease, you can tell council, but that doesn't mean that that's what's going to end up happening.
Right.
And, and as long as you're aware of that, you can be as specific as you want, just understand that there'll be a process. But what's anchoring my brain at this point in time is maximum flexibility. It's not five years, four years, three years, two years, 10 years, it's maximum flexibility, and that would be the outcome that would be negotiated with the Forest Service, is to give you that flexibility to do in the harbor what you feel like needs to be done.
And then we also have, as harbor commissioners, trying to get our users, our harbor, mainly slipholders, is the pass the red face test kind of thing, a thousand bucks. I mean, what? You have a warehouse and a wharf and all this stuff, you know, it's got, and I know the Forest Service does a lot of things for the community of Cordova, but the harbor is supposed to pay its own way.
Right, and.
We're, we're fixing the dock and we're making, we, I mean, a thousand dollars is not.
We just put 200 grand into the approach.
I think, but Leif, maybe you can speak to the fact that current code, 55 years ago, we were dealing with a totally different framework. Right now, we are required to enter into lease negotiations at fair market value, right?
Yeah, I believe the Forest Service is a bit of that. But at this point, you know, the current concerns about that, the whole type of term on fair market value, it has changed. The council can, the fair market value, you guys have any ideas or, that's the way I've determined.
Since it's located.
Wharfage calculation.
It's located in the harbor, I feel like it needs to be calculated somewhat on what we're paying for our stalls and stuff, like when somebody has like three or four boats and somebody else gets a whole dock space and everything, and yet they're paying a small 20% of what you pay yearly in stall rates, it would, you know, it kind of rubs you the wrong way, I guess.
What do we charge Cam 2 when we rent docks?
That's what I'm wondering, we have wharfage calculations for.
I mean, we're renting them square footage of dock that's comparable to linear feet of dock when they tie up a boat, I guess.
Also, I'm, I'm talking about the, not upland part, but the raised portion on piles that is being maintained by the, by the city that they have their warehouse on. Anyways, it's, it's not our job to come up with the cost and, and all the details, like you're saying of the thing, but just as far as getting input from the harbor commission, having the long lease, $1, and then have the idea that, okay, now we want to try to do something more with that area and having them so resistant to the idea of change or you're kicking us out or you're making, and it's like, no, we're not, we're just trying to figure out what's going to be the highest and best use of the land and how do we keep the lights on and the floats together down there and getting, and obviously, having the Forest Service as a partner going for funding is a big feather in our hat, you know, they're, they're a big thing. So anyways, I don't know, is there any particular, you got?
Obviously, I think that that $1 for 50 years was done right after the earthquake, and I think they made a partnership, the city, to get funding. I think that's why that $1 went in. I don't think it was something that the city really wanted to do, I think it was just something that they wanted help from the Forest Service, they're going to do that.
So I guess I would like to, I mean, do we even have a motion on the table to adopt this yet? So technically, we should have had that before we even started talking about it. But I would like to move to amend, I guess, the wording of Resolution 321-01, that Cordova City Council direct staff to renegotiate the U.S. Forest Service lease within the North Harbor at fair market value and with a maximum term of three years. And then I also have some amendments to the whereases I would like to propose, and that would be under the whereas, U.S. Forest Service dock could impede certain harbor expansion, I would like to change could to will.
Can we make a motion in a second?
Just to get it going and then you can make a motion. You brought it up and you're right, we do need to go back and do some business, so.
Well, you need to know what the motion entails.
We got to get a motion to.
We got a motion to start discussing this whole thing first.
Yeah.
And then get a second and approve, and then you can make a motion to amend.
Move.
Whatever.
I could move to, I, I would like to move the harbor commission recommend to the city council to direct staff to renegotiate the U.S. Forest Service lease within the North Harbor at fair market value and with a maximum term of three years.
Okay, so that's a motion, that's not.
That's the first motion on the floor.
This one, but there's a motion.
Can you restate the motion?
I think, I think what you do, just because of Robert's rules, is you move to approve and then he moves to amend. Someone seconds the amendments and then if, so you move to approve, it gets seconded. Discussion, he moves to amend, that gets seconded, if the second fails, then the, the original motion stands. You vote on the amendments and then you vote on the, the, the resolution with, as amended. So it's, it just, the first step is someone needs to move to approve this motion and then there'll be discussion.
Okay, so I asked for a motion to.
Approve this.
For the resolution, and I got a motion different.
Right, so someone, did someone second the motion?
No.
Okay, so motion fails, now move to, I'm just saying.
We haven't asked for a second.
Okay, never mind.
I mean, there's room if somebody wants to second it.
You can't amend a motion without it being on the table for discussion.
Yeah.
So.
He hasn't, he.
I just made the motion with.
And it was different than what.
Yeah, but you can't.
You can't amend.
Yes, you can.
Someone needs to move to approve the resolution.
Okay, but we haven't done that.
Right, so let's go there.
Unless you're, unless you're proposing.
But there's a motion on the floor.
A totally different amendment, which would be 3221-02 or something that affect, I think the cleanest way is move in and second the motion, discussion, amend the motion, second, discussion, approve, fail, whatever, yeah.
I understand that process, but that's not what happened, so I'm wondering, do you want to take your motion back or do you want to wait?
Not really, because last meeting, I moved that this come up for an action item and I said that, you know, I wanted a shorter term than five years and similar whereases as to what we had before. And then this came in and this is completely different than what we voted on before and is not what I had in mind for an agenda item when I moved for the agenda item to be placed on our agenda. And so.
So it's all fixable and it's just Robert's rules. And, and again, your amendment, it's just get this motion on the table and then amend it.
You can make it any way you want. He, he started off, he started off talking about amendments.
Right.
And then when I asked for a motion to approve the resolution, Kenny gave us a motion that didn't include the resolution.
Right.
It just simplified it all down, as, as I understand it.
But it said five years, which is not.
But, yeah.
Three, I mean, sorry.
For lack of a second, that motion will fail and then you could go back.
We, we don't know if we're going to get a second.
Okay, then go for the second.
Still wrong.
Yeah.
It's still wrong?
It's wrong because.
Because it's on the agenda as the way, I think that it, with the public process, have said this is going to be on the agenda.
Okay, so it is the resolution.
Kenny can make it anything he wants.
It is the resolution. I understand that.
Yeah, it doesn't get the approval, it's just approval to discussion and amend.
Do you understand that because it's listed as the resolution, we can approve, we can decide to.
We can rewrite this whole thing.
Bring the resolution, then you can make amendments to it.
Yeah.
Then you can make amendments to it.
Yeah, because this is what's in front of the body, this is what the public has seen, and so you have to act on this particular motion. By, by moving and seconding, it only opens it up for discussion, it doesn't approve it. So if someone would move to approve, someone seconds, then there's discussion and amendment, then you're all set. And then Kenny, you can put on the table any of those suggestions you made, and then we're modifying this motion that has been seen by the public, and that's what's required for Robert's rules.
Wait a second. So do we want to withdraw that motion?
All right, yeah, I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Move to approve this resolution, Resolution 03-21-01, USFS lease.
And second for Max, okay. Now.
Now Kenny.
Now we have this discussion about it and specific changes.
Okay, I would like to move to amend Resolution 03-21-01, striking flexibility in term and put a maximum term of three years.
Second.
I guess furthermore, do I need to word every single change in the, in the original motion or?
You can either do them, if you do them by each then and second and then vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And then you can bring up another amendment, or you can do them all at one time and then i, if you, if you feel like it's not so difficult that any piece, if, if you feel like any piece of it might fail, you might want to do them one at a time.
And then at the end, you have to do a, at the end, you have to do a, you need to approve it as amended.
Amended, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to, I'll do them separately, so let's, we can discuss that amendment and then we can vote on that one.
Okay, so we're, the first amendment is a three-year, there was one other thing you had in there.
It would be to strike the words flexibility in the term and replace with, for a maximum term of three years.
Oh.
Or, and with a maximum term.
Okay, so Jake, you, you're a little broken there, but I think I heard you say that as far as discussion on this, that you would be good with five years?
That's correct.
Okay, so any other discussion on the term?
I would just say I would be agreeable to three or five years, I just think that five years is about the max that I'd be comfortable with calling was.
Mike, is one of them up to five?
That's what we were discussing before was five, we're changing, cutting it back.
Well, that was a year ago, and so.
Personally, I'm still good with five as we're discussing this, and, but I don't, you know.
I think the five years would be a maximum, they had years to do this.
Yeah, we've already given them six years.
But.
Yeah.
Okay, so the three has been moved and seconded, do we want to vote on the term of three?
Seconded, let me call for a.
I think we could do, or is there any more discussion on that?
Call for a question, I guess.
Call for a question. Do you want to do a roll call vote? Randy?
Take that?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Max, please?
No.
No?
Yes.
Take that?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion failed.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah.
Amend that, I'd like to make a motion on Resolution 32101, that we make that fair market value with a maximum term of five years.
Okay, for five years, do we have a second? Mike, seconds? Any?
I would, I would rather leave it as written than do five years, because that gives staff the ability to have flexibility.
It says maximum term of five years, but yeah, it gives them more flexibility to have a longer term.
I would, I would rather leave it as written than do five years, because that gives staff the ability to have flexibility.
It says maximum term of five years, but yeah, it gives them more flexibility to have a longer term as. Okay, so we have a motion, it's been moved and seconded, and I guess let's go to voice vote again on this. If, if there's any more discussion than anybody has on the time. Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Take that?
Yes.
Andy Craig?
Yes.
Max Wies?
Yes.
Ken Joe?
Nope.
Like that?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Is there any other amendments to this resolution?
Yeah, so, um, I guess on that last amendment, so on, on my first amendment, I got the, uh, I guess it would, it would read wrong if we did it the way I suggested, where we strike flexibility in the term for, and then replace with a maximum of five years. It'll read wrong, um, so, you know, maybe that needs to be reworded as, uh, for fair market value and with flexibility on the location of the lease for a maximum of five years. Maybe that would be the proper way to word that.
I don't know. I'm not the wordsmith.
Um, I guess that, yeah, uh, when we were voting, that we didn't read back exactly the language, but our, and we might feel like a concurrence here is if we say for fair market value and with flexibility as to the term and location not to exceed five years.
Okay.
Does everybody? Do you have that language, Randy?
Um, the, the location not to exceed five years, so you.
Both. Term and location.
The term. I, I think these are two very different things. Um, so I think, I think as it was worded, it, it, it really, it's just as long as we know clearly what you want, but I think the term is five years, the location is flexible. Um, it could be, you know.
Sure.
Anywhere, so that's what this reads, and I think it reads okay as it was amended by Kenny, um, so.
Okay, can you, do you want to read us what you have as the new language for that last? Everybody has it, right?
You have it, right? Do you have?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, renegotiate within North Harbor at fair market value, and when, and with, with, with a maximum term of, was it five years?
And flexibility as to the location?
Yep.
Hey, that works for me, that sounds, you're right, we were kind of getting.
It just, yeah, I started rereading it and it went wrong to me.
Two things mixed up. Hey, um, is anybody opposed to the wordsmith language cleanup we just did to our amendment? What?
I know. I know, gotta get it right.
All right, so, any other changes or amendments to this document?
Um, yeah, I would like to, um, move to amend the word could on the third whereas, the current location of the USFS dock could impede certain harbor expansion. I would like to change could to will.
Second.
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, we changed the language, whereas the current location, US Forest Service dock, will impede certain harbor expansion. Yes, I'm, I, I don't have a problem with could, uh, I understand we're, we're, we're not sure what's gonna happen there. Will that be in the way? I don't know, but, um, anybody else have anything discussion on that?
The only thing is, is you're saying that that dock is shallow as it is. But you might, you're gonna have to, you know, change or float off, but everything's not gonna look the same as that Forest Service dock. You're gonna have to pull that off somehow, because they need more water or same boat or anything to pull in there.
Uh, I, I think the way I see it, they could put the dock in the exact same place and be totally fine. Maybe on a three-foot minus, you couldn't get a big stern picker back there or something, but I think that 99% of the time, it would be totally fine for any boat to get in.
That's what I was wondering, this could be for the same boats or this all.
Yeah, although this dock isn't really designed for same boats, you know, it's more for, you know, for gillnetters. It's basically the whole point of this is so that when you come in from an opener on May 20th, you don't have to sit at the fuel dock for eight hours to get fuel for the next opener, which is commonplace around here the last few years. You know, there's 50, 60 boat lineups down there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I just, you mentioned it was shallow over the, one side of that dock, and it's one of the things, what we use it for.
Not, not, it's not that bad. For like, for your bow picker and stuff, you could pull up there at any time on the biggest minus of the year.
Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion on will or could impede certain harbor expansion? Hearing none, I guess, uh, voice vote?
Take that?
Yes.
Andy Craig?
No.
Yes.
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 Any other changes?
Uh, yeah, so I'd like to move to amend, I'd like to add a whereas, um, after the, after the, it reads the current Harbor Facilities Master Plan calls for an expansion towards the US Forest Service dock and the Prince William Sound Science Center, and I'd like to add a whereas after that, um, whereas the Curdova Harbor Commission previously passed a resolution December 9th, 2015, giving the USFS notice of the harbor's intentions, and.
Second.
And, oh, oh, just, okay, that was the end of it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that is Resolution 32001, is that what you're talking about? Because we could just, i, it's right in front of Shoreside's letter, I think it pretty clearly.
Oh, the resolution you're talking?
Yeah, I think that's what he's referring to.
I think so.
I like referring to that resolution. It has maximum term of five years, it shows our consistency through, um, time, and that we also warn these guys for, this is the five-year extension?
No, so this one was dated, so the one you're talking about, the 32001, that was in 2020. I'm talking about one that happened in 2015 where we gave them five years. We gave them five-year warning that their lease was expiring and we were planning to not renew. And that, I don't think it's in this packet.
Oh, okay, that's Resolution December 9th.
The one thing I would caution is that, um, Harbor Commission is not in a position to give warning to the Forest Service, um, so maybe a, a different word, um, has been considering, um.
This was the, I just copy pasted it from like two previous resolutions.
If we didn't say warning, we said notice.
Yeah, I said notice, that was the right word.
Okay, okay, that, yeah.
Gave, gave notice of the harbor's intention.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. I just was saying warning, it just, it's such a strong word, so I, I don't think.
That was, it was actually in, this, that exact whereas was in 32001.
Yeah.
I just copy pasted it. It was missing from this one, and it was some that I liked that was missing.
Notice of the harbor's intentions.
Of expansion into that area.
I, I just heard the word warning, and I thought.
Yeah.
It just was a, a strange.
Okay, so, read it again, clearly.
Okay, so, whereas the Curdova Harbor Commission previously passed a resolution December 9th, 2015, giving the USFS notice of the harbor's intentions, and. And that was just copy pasted from previous resolutions.
Okay, um, that's been moved?
Second.
Seconded?
Voice.
Any further discussion of that? I think that's, oh, I think it's a good idea to kind of show some, we've been working on this. Uh, Jake?
Yes, I agree with it.
Okay, anybody else, anything? I think we can go to vote. Why don't we do a voice vote again, Randy?
Take that?
Aye.
Andy Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Ken Joe?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's, uh, motion passes, the amendment, is there, and is there anything else?
Couple more whereas's, so.
Couple more?
Uh, move to amend.
Okay.
Um, so immediately after the last whereas, I would like to add another whereas that, um, the US, so, whereas the USFS vessels could potentially share secure mortgage um, with the Alaska State Trooper vessels at the Alaska State Dock in the south side of the Curdova Harbor, and.
Second.
So, the discussion on this would be, this was also copy pasted from our last resolution.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, anyway, I'm not excited about, there's a lot of options. There's a lot of things, and, and maybe that's one, but, I mean, they should be, um, yeah, anyways, I don't know. I guess we're trying to find solutions, that's a possible solution?
I just, having this go to council and P&amp;Z with members of the public who do not use the harbor every day, do not come to our Harbor Commission meetings, have not been part of these discussions since 2012, like most of us have been, this would get, you know, right there in the recommendation, gives them one of the ideas that has been, and it's one of the better ideas in my opinion, and it's been in our previous resolutions, and so I just felt like it was missing from this resolution. Um, I see it as a logical, common sense solution to their need for mortgage.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? On this whereas?
I might just suggest, instead of, uh, stating directly the state is that the harbor, harbor currently has multiple alternate options for them, and not paying it as on one place for them.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that.
That way, if you let the public know that there are other places where they can move to.
Do you want to address that in a separate whereas?
Um, I guess I, I would be willing to, I guess, a friendly amendment to this to, um, you know, whereas there are multiple.
Or that. Secure facility is available.
Um, no, there's, there's multiple alternatives for, um, USFS mortgage in the harbor, um, including but not limited to at the Alaska State Dock on the south side of the Curdova Harbor, you know, maybe something like that. I, I'd be open to that, say, hey, we've got multiple options, here's one. The, the problem I see with saying multiple secured is because the other option is to put them in a stall and maybe give them some uplands to put their shop on, but that doesn't get them the gated parking that they want.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the whole security thing when you're tied up at a float in the harbor is. We're not gonna get them security there.
My boat's gonna get robbed.
Anyways, um.
So as far as.
I agree leaving the word security out of it.
Yeah, it's, the secured parking, the only place I see that would meet that need of theirs would be the Alaska State Troopers, unless we were to find a new place to.
They don't have secured parking.
Mm-hmm.
They have a gate, they have a fence and a gate.
They never close it, but they do have secured.
Parking, they have a secured dock.
Okay, yeah.
Both, they have, there's a gate on that.
Yeah.
On that parking area, they just never close it.
Where?
Right down there?
Oh, no, I thought you meant the Forest Service.
Oh, yeah, no.
Forest Service doesn't apparently have.
They don't have secure parking.
No, they have secure dock, yeah.
They're, they're.
Boat parking.
Yeah, sorry.
Their ramp has a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A gate on it. Their dock is not secure, but, yeah, okay, um, I agree leaving out the security, and I think that we need to get back to what exactly that, read it one more time with, maybe we can incorporate Jake's suggestions.
Um, so, whereas the USFS vessels could potentially uh, more. Or, yeah, yeah, I'm not, so, whereas the USFS vessels could potentially share secure mortgage with the Alaska State Trooper vessels at the Alaska State Dock, the south side of the harbor. So we'd change that to whereas there, the Harbor Commission has identified multiple mortgage options for the USFS vessels, including but not limited to sharing mortgage at the Alaska State Dock in the south side of the Curdova Harbor.
Okay.
Would that work?
Works for me, I like that language. So, now that's a friendly amendment, does it need to have a second, or?
I, I think I just have to concur with it.
I don't know, because it was Ken's amendment in the first place on the whereas.
I think that as long as the person who made the original motion agrees.
And then the, and then the second, the person who seconded the amendment has to agree as well.
All right? I think it was. It was you. Are you good with that language change, Max?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a voice vote on this one.
Take that?
Yes.
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 And then I guess the last amendment would be in the now therefore be it resolved. Um, we would need to update that language to reflect the first amendment that was passed. Um, as far as it says flexibility as to the term and location, it would need to reflect the change of the, of the header, whatever that verbiage was decided to be.
Um.
So it would need to, I can't remember how exactly Helen read that or.
The maximum five years as to the term and flexibility, okay, to the location.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, it would just need to.
Do you want that in the header as well?
No, no, we already did the amendment for the header. It just, it just, that.
The bottom line.
The bottom line needs to be updated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to reflect the title.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, any other discussion about that? Voice vote?
Take that?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we have any other amendments to Resolution 321-01?
Stop thinking, Ken.
Well, I had. I had one in mind, but I don't think it would, it, I don't think it's our, it would be something that I would want at the council level if I would have been elected. I don't think it, it goes here. It's, uh, you know, whereas there'd been a, it would, it would, I would like to see it in there, but I don't think we can. I'm not sure, I'd have to ask Helen on that, but whereas another letter of interest for this location has been submitted. So I don't, I don't think we can put that in there, so.
But, because it, it's gotta go through the process, through lay, through planning, and.
Yeah, the City Council, it's all back.
Yeah. Yeah, we can leave it off our resolution, um. All right, so we have some amendments to a resolution that has been moved and seconded. The amendments have been moved and seconded and approved. I think we're down to a final vote on passing the resolution. Does anybody have any further discussion about the resolution as amended?
Call it.
Hearing none? Uh, let's do a voice vote? Randy?
Take that?
Aye.
You say aye?
He said aye.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Like please?
Yes.
Ken Joe?
Yes.
Like that?
Yay.
Okay, it has been moved, or it has been, uh, passed, and we are back to the agenda, which takes us to miscellaneous business. Was there anything we had under there? We didn't move anything to there.
Nope.
Audience participation?
Uh, Lindsay will check, see if there's anyone on the phone.
No.
Okay, no one else is online besides Jake?
Commission comments and next meeting agenda items, well, we put a bunch of next meeting agenda items on there for the planning and stuff. meeting agenda items on there for the planning and stuff. Do we know when that is, the next meeting?
Second week, second Wednesday.
Coming up quickly. Like next Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, next Wednesday.
Yep.
Okay, in one week, okay. Comments? I guess we'll start with you, Max.
I don't really have a lot to say, we discussed everything pretty much over everything. I think we got quite a bit done today. I'd like to figure out a bit more on the north side of the harbor, look at that better more, get some more solid outlook, what we're looking for there. That's about all I have.
Okay, Ken?
Um, yeah. Obviously think five years is a little too long, but, you know, I'm glad we were able to get some of the other changes I wanted in there, and thanks for everybody showing up and spending all day on this, or all afternoon on this. Sorry, I made it take longer.
Mike?
Good discussion here today, and I'm, uh, excited to talk about getting some more parking over in the North Harbor there.
Yeah, right on. Jake, anything on the phone?
Yeah, you guys, uh, got me pretty well there.
Yep.
Aye, yep.
All right, um, yeah, a lot of good work getting this done. I think that, uh, you know, it might be tough for the government to get a lease done on a short notice, but that's on them, not on us, and this gives us the best flexibility. As I commented on past items that were made, um, you know, if they are punching in a road to Shepherd Point, maybe they have a bunch of fill to get rid of. Putting it down there in the shipyard might be a good place to do it. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yes, thank you, guys. Helen, Leif, appreciate you. Lindsay, guys. Doing this, and you guys for coming, and sunny afternoon.
Move to adjourn.
And, uh. Turn, any opposed to adjourn?